Good afternoon and welcome to the Committee on Housing and Buildings. At this time, please place your phone on vibrate or on silent mode. If you want to submit testimony, send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
That was a, that was a test run. Good afternoon and thank you for attending today's hearing of the Committee on Housing and Buildings on the Fiscal 2024 Preliminary Budget and Fiscal 2023 Preliminary Mayor's Management Report. We will also hear Resolution 503 from Councilmember Justin Brennan, which calls upon the New York State Legislature and Governor to pass legislation enabling the conversion of commercial units to residential units. I am Councilmember Beirina Sanchez, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, and I would like to acknowledge my colleagues today. Councilmembers Hudson, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Barron, Public Advocate Jomani Williams, Councilmember Feliz, and Councilmember Abril. We also know Councilmember Tiffany Cabana is joining us shortly. We will first hear today from the Department of Buildings, followed by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development at 3:30, and then members of the public regarding both agencies can testify about 5:30 PM. To set, to set the stage for this hearing, I will begin by again revisiting the state of our city's affordable housing crisis, disproportionately impacting low to moderate income communities and communities of color. And it has been exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic and recovery efforts since then. In our city, only eighteen percent of renter occupied homes are well maintained by landlords, according to the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Over seventy percent of the lowest income households in some communities live in homes that they cannot afford. Rent burden is disproportionately felt among those that are the most vulnerable and that we see that we are subsidizing the highest AMIs and units stand vacant for unconscionable periods of time. In districts, in districts like mine where ninety-four percent of residents are renters, this is tantamount to a persistent displacement risk. As we approach solutions, homeownership approaches will be key. Hundreds of thousands of evictions have been filed since the moratorium was lifted last year, and our affordable housing, including NYCHA, faces an arrears crisis that destabilizes even those homes that should be affordable today. DOB has an essential role in the city's essential, the city's, excuse me. The Department of Buildings has an essential role as a city agency responsible for enforcing the New York City Construction Codes, zoning resolution, the New York State Multiple Dwelling Law at one million buildings in New York City and over forty thousand known active construction sites. Additionally, the Department of Buildings plans and will enforce heightened energy standards due to Local Law 97. They work to improve construction site safety and training compliance and implement the department's self-service online portal, DOB Now. Your work is crucial. Not perhaps in the view of the every, every single day New Yorker, but you keep us safe. We appreciate your efforts towards efficiency over the last year, the blast recommendations and the many, many roundtables that you have held, but there are tensions and concerns arising with respect to how we continue to keep New Yorkers safe even as we chase efficiencies. DOB's fiscal 2024 expense budget totals in $187.8 million and its revenue budget is $337.6 million. The expense budget is $51 million less than in fiscal year 2023 at adoption. The major action in DOB's preliminary budget is a one, is an 11.9 million baseline vacancy reduction cut, or PEG, which eliminates ninety-four positions. The PEG attempts to find savings as a result of DOB's vacancy crisis, which has impacted the inspector titles at the heart of the agencies as well as other title, titles. There remain over a hundred inspector vacancies that DOB is challenged to fill, with three hundred and thirty-four vacancies overall. So DOB is removing one hundred thirty-three headcount positions and proposing fifty-one million in cuts at the same time that DOB has completed twelve percent fewer in construction inspections in the first four months of fiscal year twenty-three versus the same period in 2022. DOB did not meet its annual inspection target of one hundred and forty thousand inspections. And construction fatalities in 2020, 2022 calendar year is the highest on record since the record high of twenty in 2015. So before construction safety reforms, and that's before, excuse me, construction safety reforms were implemented by the council and previous administration. In October 2022, DOB had the highest vacancy rate of any medium to large agency at twenty-two point seven percent. Today, that vacancy rate is lower at seventeen point seven percent, but this is because of the vacancy reductions. Given DOB's core responsibilities, the administration's proposal, proposed cut of $51 million without an understanding here at the council of how these core functions will be maintained is a cause for concern. The first construction worker death of this year, which happened last week on a site that had received multiple violations from the department, is a reminder of the high stakes of the department's work to protect the public. Connected to buildings is of course housing. The domain of HPD, New York City has entered a new and more challenging phase of its longstanding housing affordability crisis. Half of the city's renters now spend more than one-third of their income on rent, while a third spend more than fifty percent of their income on rent. The failure over decades to build enough affordable housing has caught up to us and it is hollowing out New York's diverse communities. The lack of adequate affordable housing is felt most acutely by ordinary workers, youth, seniors, a cohort that in New York City is disproportionately people of color. It is a serious issue that New Yorkers who either grew up here or helped build this city are being forced out. So prior to the next panel, I will, I will speak more on HPD's budget. I would like to thank the committee staff who have helped prepare for today's hearing. Daniel Krup, our Principal Financial Analyst, Jack Story, the Finance Unit Head, Chima Obuchere, the Deputy Director, Audrey Sun and Taylor Zaloni, our Committee Councils, Jose Conde and Charles Kim, our Policy Analyst, and my District Office Staff, Chief of Staff Sam Cardenas, and Legislative and Communications Director Kadeem Robinson, It Takes a Village. After HPD, we will hear from members of the public and I would like to remind everyone that if you would like to testify, please fill out a witness slip at the, with the Sergeant of Arms so we can put you in the queue. Agency testifiers are kindly reminded to please keep your oral testimony to fifteen minutes and I will now pass it to our Committee Council to swear in DOB's leadership before turning it over for testimony.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you. You can begin when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez, and members of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. I'm Cas Villancic, Acting Commissioner for the New York City Department of Buildings, and I am joined today by Sharon Neal, members of my leadership, Department Leadership Team, Deputy Commissioner for Finance and Administration Sharon Neal, Chief of Staff and Leader of Human Resources Nadia Stevens, and Deputy Commissioner for External Communication Gularma Patino. We are pleased to be here to discuss the fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget and the department priorities for upcoming year. Construction and real estate are a backbone of New York City, a built environment unlike any other. As the primary regulator of this vital industry, the department helps facilitate the creation of new residential and commercial space for our growing city, all while promoting the safety on the tens of thousands of active construction sites and in the city nearly 1.1 million existing buildings. So it's work, the department, through its work, the department strives to strike the right balance between compliant development and safety. To further its mission, the department with its approximately 1,600 dedicated public servants enforce the city construction codes, the zoning resolution, the New York State Multiple Dwelling Law to protect those who leave, work, or visit the city. The fiscal year 2024 preliminary budgets allocates approximately 188 million in expense funds to the department. Of this funding, approximately 155 million is for personal services, which support 1,800 tourary three budgeted positions and nearly 3 million is for other than personal services, which primarily support contractual services, equipment, and supplies. This funding is critical to supporting the department, department's mission and priority. The department continues to make tremendous progress in key areas, including to facilitate compliant development in an efficient manner to improve safety at construction sites and to ensure building owners implement aggressive emission reduction and energy conservation measures, all while continuing to improve the services we offer to our customers and members of the public. In fiscal year 2022, the last full fiscal year, approximately 150,000 construction jobs were filed with the department and we issued nearly 164,000 initial and renewal, and renewal construction permits combined. This represents an uptick from the previous fiscal year, which indicate that construction activity is picking up as the construction industry recovers from the impact of COVID-19 pandemic, which included a pause on non-essential constructions. So far this fiscal year, we are already seeing an uptick over the construction jobs filed and permitted last year, which indicated the industry is hard at work. The number of construction jobs filed online in DOB Now, continued to grow year over year as we continue our shift from the building information system called BIS, a三四旧的mainframe system. The majority of construction jobs are currently filed in DOB Now. Earlier this month, the department took step to further face in DOB Now by requiring full demolition jobs to be filed in DOB Now. When fully implemented, DOB Now will allow our customers to conduct all of the, of all of their business with the department online, which will lead to great efficiency and more transparency by allowing building owners, business owners, design professionals, and contractors to determine exactly where a construction project is in approval process. Despite recent increases in construction activity, we continue to review plan for new building major renovation and minor renovation expeditiously. Last year, we completed initial plan review for new buildings in eight days, which is an improvement over nine days the previous year. The time it took to the department, for the department to review applications involving major renovation was six days, which is also an improvement over nine days the previous year. Applications involving minor alterations continue to be reviewed within two business days. We are on track to maintain and to improve upon the strong service level this year. Our goal is to continue to promptly complete our initial plan reviews and to ensure that customers know what to expect when their plans, when their, when their plans are being reviewed by continuing to train, train our plan examiners to ensure that plan review is efficient and consistent. We have also launched new program to create greater efficiency for certain project, including larger construction projects and those pursued by small businesses. We have launched a major project development program, which provide larger construction projects with dedicated resources at the department. This goal, the goal of this program is to engage with larger construction projects even before they begin their project to review the project scope and to work together to find best path forward. The department is continuing this hands-on approach to help prevent delays on these larger construction sites with the goal of keeping the industry working on safe and code compliant development projects. We also recognize the business may face hurdles when embarking on a construction project. As such, we recently launched a small business support team, which provide businesses with dedicated resources at the department who they can rely on even before they start a construction project or at any time during the process if they have any question or face any hurdles. This innovative program eliminates any construction related uncertainties a business may face as they operate their business or work toward opening their new business. The wait time between a construction inspection request and inspection, which occurs after a construction project is completed by contractor, also continue to be short. Development inspections are being completed within three business days of a request in most instances, which includes inspection involving general construction, electrical work, and plumbing work. This progress on the development inspection service level can be attributed to the efficiency gain from DOB Now, which allows for all types of development inspection to be scheduled online. This makes it easier for our customers to schedule inspection appointments and offer more precise inspection scheduling. To help our customers understand what to expect when starting a construction project, we have launched a customer service dashboard, which we continue to improve upon. This online tool allow our customers to view variety of metric that are updated regularly, including the average wait times for plan review by job type, the number of appointments to plan approval, and the time it takes the department to complete inspection request. We also continue to respond to complaints from members of the public expeditiously. We are responding to the most, we are responding to the most serious complaint, Priority A complaints, which has those complaints that relates, which those complaint that relates to condition that may present an immediate threat to the public within hours. We are responding to Priority B complaints, which capture violating condition that if occurring, why serious do not represent an immediate threat to the public within ten days. As a result of responding to this complaint and our proactive inspection concerning construction safety, we issued nearly sixty-seven thousand, sixty-seven thousand orders since last fiscal year. To ensure that safety regulations are being complied with all construction sites, sites in the department continue to conduct proactive, unannounced inspection of larger construction sites. Since this inspection began in late 2018, the department had conducted over ninety-five thousand proactive inspection at nearly thirty-eight thousand unique construction sites. During this inspection, we ensured that workers and supervisors have received the construction safety training they needed to work on such site. While the department will continue to conduct proactive inspection at site that posed the greatest safety risk, we recognize that incident can occur at site of any size. As such, late last year, we announced the start of construction safety campaign that will involve enforcement sweep and educational outreach to all active construction sites regardless of the size. To date, we have already visited over four thousand sites to look for unsafe condition and to distribute multilingual educational materials to construction workers about avoiding common work site hazards. The department is also prepared to fulfill its obligation to address greenhouse gas emission coming from the buildings. We are well positioned with dedicated team of energy and sustainability experts to support the city goal of achieving carbon neutrality. In addition to enforcing the energy code, enforcing existing law and require certain building to report their energy and water used to, energy and water used and to perform retro commissioning. We are also implementing the Climate Mobilization Act. The Climate Mobilization Act requires all new buildings and existing buildings undergoing certain major renovation to install a solar photovoltaic system, a green roof system, or combination of the two and regulate greenhouse gas emissions larger building starting next year. At the end of last year, the department released the Local Law 97 of 2019 Advisory Board Report, which include a collection of recommendation for the city to consider regarding the implementation of the Local Law 97. We also finalized the first comprehensive set of rules that support the implementation of this groundbreaking law and plan on issuing additional rules throughout this year to ensure building owners have the guidance they need to comply with this law. While I'm proud of the strong service level, we are maintaining and of the ambitious goal we are pursuing. I understand that the more we, the more can be done to better serve New Yorkers. As such, we are partnering with the industry through craft recommendations for structural improvements at the department. Late last year, the department launched the Adams Commission, which convinced the stake, which convinced stakeholders from labor industry and nonprofit sector, city government, to produce recommendation for improving the work of the department. The department is in the process of finalizing this recommendation and expects to share them with the city council in the coming weeks. Further, we look forward to, to your support to implement any recommendation that might require change to the law. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you. We look forward to partnering with you to improve the work of the department for the benefit of all New Yorkers. We welcome any question if you have.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony, Commissioner. I'm going to ask just a few quick questions and then I'm going to turn it over to some of my colleagues who have some time constraints and I definitely want to encourage their participation. So, so starting off, thank you, thank you for your testimony. You highlighted, of course, a couple of areas in which DOB has review, has improved timelines such as reviewing certain kinds of applications. But I mentioned in my testimony, with one hundred and thirty-three headcount removed and the fifty-one million dollars in cuts from the FY23 adopted plan, does DOB have the resources to ensure your core mission, like building safety enforcement is carried through? Do you feel confident that you have the amount of resources you need?
DOB is committed to providing evidence, evident by our service level. First of all, during plan examination, you said it's our service those continue to be improved and with implementation of DOB Now, which definitely prove efficiency of our plan examination level. We, we, we're looking forward to see that it's, the service level even improved with our goal to two business days for each application. So I committed to this goal and kind of working towards this, this direction with current staff level. In addition, speaking about inspection level, we're improving efficiency of our operation. We're improving cross-training of our inspectors. Make sure when inspector dispatched or dispatched to the site in spite of his, that he's cross-trained to perform multi-trade inspections. If you needed to visit, for example, if we send it boiler inspector to inspect the site and in vicinity of the boiler inspection area, there is a stop work order which need to be visited or site which is abandoned, we utilize this inspector to perform this inspection. So overall, as I think, we're implementing this efficiency in our operation with DOB Now, with routing an inspector and I'm very confident that we complete, complete our tasks.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Zooming, zooming in, so understanding that, you know, some, maybe some inspectors can do, they can carry out more than one kind of inspection and there's cross-training. But what about the, the fact that DOB did not meet your target of one hundred and forty thousand inspections this year?
This explain, that this target, we, we want to, first of all, I want to say that we're going to change this reporting structure because does not reflect that our department right now perform two types of inspection. First is development inspection and enforcement inspection. Development inspection more associated with the construction industry. When a work completed, we send that inspector to the site. And enforcement inspection and mainly inspection related to the complaints, unsafe conditions which we visited. So this number does not reflect all of the inspections. At current, we, our current level on inspection, around three hundred thousand inspection per year and we kind of on the way to, to meet this level for the next year right now.
And what, what can we expect in terms of changes to those two types of inspections? Are you saying you're going to have different targets for development inspections versus enforcement?
Yes, we're going to modify MMR. I definitely see reason that we're going to discuss with you how we're going to modify more MMR to reflect the way we operate because this seems to be a better way to report and first of all, better way to inspect and to assign our inspection. So in this case, no, in this case, no confusion that we had not met our target.
Okay. And finally, how, and this is a related question. How is DOB balancing that need to get core safety and inspections right while advancing those regulatory reforms that were proposed in the BLAST report that you all published, the administration published a few months ago, as well as implementing important legislation like Local Law 97?
Depending of Local Law 97 is kind of standalone subject for now. So it's, we're kind of working toward, as I said, we just release Advisory Board Report and we release first set of rules and Local Law, Local Law Enforcement Division contained twenty-four dedicated individuals right now. So it's obviously this, this division will need to be enforced once rules developed because with this current set of rules, we're good enough to work with it right now. But once reports start coming in, we definitely will approach, discuss with SMB how we need to improve this division.
Okay. Thank you. Could you put the mic a little bit closer to you? It's a little difficult to hear. So now I'm going to, I'm going to start turning it over to my, my colleagues, Councilmember Carr. You were first up and then we're going to go to our public advocate and then to Councilmember Abril.
Thank you so, Baron. Thank you so much, Chair Sanchez. Commissioner, it's good to see you and your team. I want to just focus a little bit in my questioning about Local Law 97, right? We're coming up on 2024, the year where enforcement begins from your agency. And I guess I'm just kind of concerned about the benchmark or the standard by which we're going to be judging folks' use of the electrical grid. Because my understanding is that when Local Law 97 was enacted, a very specific energy usage was written into the law with respect to the entire system. And yet, a lot's changed since the law was enacted. We've seen a forty-seven percent increase since the enactment of Local Law 97 in terms of emissions for the NYC region, twenty-seven percent in the last year. Perhaps it has something to do with the closure of the Indian Point Nuclear Facility. We see fossil fuel use up across the board for the area. And so I'm just wondering if that's the benchmark, the standard by which buildings own energy consumption, carbon usage is going to be determined or measured against. How are you able to give guidance to those buildings about how they're going to come into compliance again when kind of the, the measuring stick has kind of changed a lot since, since that enactment took place? So how are you going to give that kind of guidance? How are you going to do that kind of enforcement when again, the standard against which buildings are measured seems to be out of date based on our own regional consumption, based on sources of energy we no longer have?
Yeah, this time, Local Law, as I said, it's Local Law 97 right now. It's Advisory Board Report was released and only first set of rules was issued right now. So it's, it's first set of rule, this allowed, allowed building owners to calculate their emission, establish a benchmark based on coefficient established in the, in the rules. And this is create a benchmark and after that is the right coefficients, which kind of owners supposed to equalize their energy use. So first report is expected to be only, compliance date is twenty-five and first reports will be probably start coming in in twenty-four when the report is due. This, as I said, our staff, our total staff of Local Law 97 unit, I'm sorry, Sustainability Unit, is fifty-four employees and those employees have power to, with reviewing not just the local law, but others, energy related, sustainability related laws and dedicated to Energy Code Plan Examination Process. Two further rules will be developed, obviously to clarify submission request. I believe at this time, we have a benchmark established precisely and we'll see because as I said, this is only first set of rules and more rules will be developed and we expecting first a covered building will be able to submit their reports on time and receive qualified review for that.
Okay. Well, I think it's difficult to hold buildings to a standard and we ourselves as a regional energy strategy are burning more fossil fuels at the same time. And I'll just ask my last question, which is related to site safety inspections. We passed legislation at the end of last term to protect workers on sites and there's some concern amongst those in organized labor that, you know, maybe DOB doesn't have the resources to make sure resources to make sure that law is being enforced properly, that folks are safe on site. Can you speak a little to that and whether or not you feel you have the resources you need to do the enforcement of, of that recent enactment?
Okay. No, we committed to comply with the law, no question about, and our, as I said, it's like we're looking on improving of our efficiency and with that, in our dispatch system for inspector was manual until now, let's say. So we're implementing IT solution to more efficiently to dispatch inspectors to the construction sites. And obviously it will be, it will be more inspection done. In addition, we established Construction Safety Compliance Unit who visited, who perform what we call proactive inspections and we have Construction Safety Enforcement Unit who perform reactive inspection. So between those two units, 138 inspectors, we technically covering majority of the construction sites and we were able to complete all the task. We initiate, obviously, besides doing inspection, just enforcing alone is not work. So we're reaching out to the industry, we're seeing a partner in the industry and developers and construction management industry. We're talking to them, we're explaining to them, for example, we recently issued major reason why stop work order can be issued. So people know, we give them full transparency, that's what they, if we observe this condition, stop work order will be issued immediately. And this is, I'm sorry, this is definitely help construction industry to plan the operation, to understand, understand our criterias, to keep it workers safe. And obviously, we enforcing site safety cards, Local Law 196.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. And I, and I know, Commissioner, that we've talked about the new SST requirements and there was a little bit of, of more time that was given to certain, certain workers to get their cards, but I want to make sure that we continue to, to follow closely the implementation of.
And we do. We gave it, there is, at this point of time, it's, I believe, 100, 250,000 cards were issued. So we follow, it's our discussion with the industry, the industry asked us for, not delay, but what we agree, we call it soft enforcement. So law is applying, but we are not issuing violations. So it's, we, for people who are in possession of legitimate card, but not the card which required currently. So this law, this soft enforcement period is expired on Monday and the full enforcement will expected to start.
Thank you. Thank you. That's helpful, Commissioner. Next, we're going to go to our public advocate, Jamani Williams.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just actually want to read a statement into the record. As mentioned, my name is Jamani Williams, a public advocate of City of New York. Want to again thank Chair Sanchez and the Members of Committee on Housing and Buildings for holding this hearing. My testimony will address housing issues as well as building code enforcement is overseen and thank the Chair for allowing me for reading this respectively on Department of Housing and Preservation and Department of Buildings. With the deteriorating housing stock and worsening affordable crisis, preserving and building new affordable housing, income targeted affordable housing in the City of New York is more important than ever. As of February, the city's homeless population reached a high of 77,000 people, a concerning number from, that coincides with the loss of thousands of rent stabilized apartments in the city and loss of thousands of income target affordable units as a whole. The mayor's current proposal allocates $36 million for HPD's Office of Development and Marketing Funds for Homeowner Assistance Program, Supportive Housing and Emergency Rent Vouchers. An additional 666,000 is allocated towards rental subsidy programs reflecting a critical need to support rent burdened households. Staffing the departments in the, in charge of these programs is key. A recent report by the Comptroller's Office found that amid high vacancy rates, HPD only met 33% of its targets. The Office of Administration ranking as one of the units of appropriation with the highest vacancy rates across city agencies. In addition to supporting homeowners and renters, the city must invest in efforts to legalize, regulate, and ensure the safety of converted accessory dwelling units or ADUs. The conversion of ADUs can help meet the need for housing stock. There are currently an estimated 400,000 people living in basement and cellar dwellings across the five boroughs. In addition to this, the city and state have explored converting empty office building into housing as an alternative to build, building on, on public land, which proves difficult given the shortage of publicly owned land. I urge the council to pass Resolution 503, which calls for the conversion of commercial units to residential units. We have to make sure that affordability is key there and that those neighborhoods have what they need so residents can live comfortable lives. The creation of the affordable housing from commercial conversions tax benefit program would stimulate more funding for conversion projects, projects, funding often cited as key barriers to conversion efforts. DOB staffing should be increased to move this process forward quickly and create new housing. Furthermore, with recent legislation seeking to amend building codes, DOB must commit to enforcing co-compliance. Co-conforcement will not only equip our city's building with the means to weather the impact of climate change as it pertains to new green energy efficient initiatives, but it will also ensure the lives and safety of housing, of New Yorkers as it relates to fire prevention. In this, I commend the administration for allocating additional city funds to re-inspecting buildings and existing self-closing door violations. I will say, as the Chair has mentioned, in both of these agencies, there is, seems to be a high rate of vacancies. And I, I do agree in trying to find efficiencies where possible in terms of vacancies, but not every vacancy is the same. Vacancy of DOB and HPD are very harmful, particularly if we don't have enough people to inspect housing for people to go into or inspect construction sites where we have sadly seen an uptick in deaths. And I was proud to have worked on our Local Law 97, so it does concern me, see what we can do to prevent those deaths from coming in. I'd also like to know what is the total revenues received from issuing after hour variances for this fiscal year and the previous fiscal years before and during the pandemic? And in closing, I'd like to know whether the AHV or after hour variance revenues end up in New York City's general fund or does it remain in the agency? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, public advocate. DOB, would you want to respond to any of the questions that the public advocate faced? Presented?
Yeah, sure. Thank you so much for your statement. We fully committed to support you. Everything what you said is totally, it's a true fact which we're looking into and I picked it up right away that like you're talking about basement and cellar unit and we totally committed to work with the council to, to make this unit legal. As there is a stack of building we're observing, as we, as you know, in our enforcement unit, we have one of the enforcement unit that calls Quality of Life and this enforcement union, fortunately, unfortunately, it busy it work following, following complaints and vacating illegal units. So there is a great merit in what you're saying and we have to find a safe way to, 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 to use those units. It's incredible, large stack of units which we can improve definitely living conditions, we improve lighting, we improve safety, and we put a lot of new units on, on, on the market, make it our rental much cheaper. So we're really committed to work with you on, on this, if you want this, and get back to you on our proposals because we have definitely have an ideas how to make it right and make it safe for everyone. If you, you know, Sharon, would you like to discuss?
Sure. So we've, we collected $26 million in fiscal year '22 for after hour variance request and we're at 18 million year to date this year.
And that, that goes all to the general fund?
Yes.
Thank you. And in terms of, the first answer with the dwelling units and of course, construction side safety, I just, I just want to add, you know, you've been actually saying that I didn't think there was enough inspectors for DOB and HPD, so it does concern me if there are any vacancies in, in some of these agencies and hopefully could push to not only fill some of those, but particularly when it comes to inspectors, get enough out there to get all the inspections that we need, particularly as we see deaths going up and we see a housing crisis where some folks can't even get their housings inspected. This is for another agency, but their houses inspected so they can move in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, public advocate. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Barron.
Thank you very much. You know, there's some conflicting reports, or conflicting analysis of progress and when I hear the chair's report saying that 140,000 fail into inspect, the number, the goal that you should have inspected, we hear your report, we're doing great with what we have, we're happy that we're reaching goals. Here's somebody else, I want to commend the mayor, administration for what they're doing and then the pegs, the administration's cutting. Then I hear, oh, vacancies can be filled. No, they can't be filled, but the mayor said you could if you fill those and then we'll give you more and until you fill those, you're not getting anymore. Then here, agencies say, we tried to get it filled, but OMB didn't put them all through and come on, what the hell is going on? You know, this is some serious stuff and all of these, you know, there's double talking and all of the, trying to get clarity on what's happening. What's happening with the vacancies and is your pay equitable to the skills and talents of the people that need to be hired for these positions? Just what is really truly going on? Let's forget the politics, let's forget that we can't criticize the mayor publicly because it's, you're in an awkward position, but the bottom line, this stuff ain't going right. And, and the safety of our people in these buildings are at risk while these games are being played, $36 million out of a 200 and 102 billion dollar budget, you know, 3% pegs from all agents, pegs, these are cuts, savings, these are cuts. What is the real picture of filling vacancies, making buildings safer for our people and you having access to be able to offer people a decent quality prevailing salary to fill these positions? What's going on really?
First of all, to address the salary, I'd just like to mention that recently, OMB allowed us to increase 15, give a 15% increase of salary for.
Increase 50%?
Hard, hard, hard to recruit titles and inspectors one of those. Second is thanks to City Council, you helped, you passed a law which allows to hire people with lower experience level and allow them to train through, to train and bring it through the department training to, to the level we require it for, to perform job duties. Third, we definitely trying to attract diversified pool of applicants because we, our position with the department is a profession and that's what we market, which is a profession which has a value outside of the department. And this is the biggest market value to attract applicants to work for us. We give a real-time training, we give certifications, we allow people to participate in a project which on the, in the private industry, you're not always has to be experienced and be, and move from project to project, which is another, another beneficial point. And this, so what I'm trying to say, that money, although it's salary, it's important and we bound it obviously by union agreement that what's allocated for inspectors, but money is important, but obtaining level of development with, when a person working for DOB is invaluable. At any given moment, person with, I always cite example that plan examiner with two, three years' experience working for, working this department of buildings has doubled the value of the salary outside on the street. So the same apply for inspectors and I see this, that our inspectors, some of us, some of our inspectors leaving us. But this is only after so many years of inspector, that's what we're trying to market, that's what we're trying to say to people. We introduce uniform to our inspectors. I was really proud, we recently conducted inspector graduation ceremony class and it's, it was so beautiful for the family to see people in uniform pledging the allegiance to the Department of Buildings conducting, to perform an inspection, safe, safety inspection, honest inspection. And I, I'm just trying to explain to you that it's not just salary is most attractive, but obviously.
Yeah, but it's more than just salaries, it's your ability to fill these vacancies, which is contradicting to what we're hearing from OMB sometime and that y'all couldn't, couldn't do it, but you're not doing it, so we're not going to add no more, you know, something, something's up and I know it's just not making sense to me. Secondly, and this will be my last question, the FDNY and their unions and those FDNY inspectors from the fire department, mostly black, I'm going to turn this into a black and white discussion. So the black mayor wants to take the black members of the FDNY mostly who does inspections on structural stuff, you know, black alarms and all of that, put them under you, DOB, but your racial composition is very, very different than the racial composition of those fire inspectors who are more experienced, but yet the mayor wants to put those inspectors either under your department or they discussing it? Are you aware of that plan or that discussion that they're trying to do that? And a lot of the FDNY, which is a very racist institution, but did have these black inspectors, fire inspectors who are far more experienced than the DOB inspectors on structural questions, but yet wants to put it all under you? I don't, I think they may have backed up off it when people had some pushback, but where are you on that plan, your position on it and where is it at this point?
So this recommendation was made in a BLAST or Get Stuff Built report and it's suggested coordination. It, it doesn't say directly that it should be transferred under Department of Building jurisdiction, but it says it should be coordination of efforts between Department of Buildings and FDNY.
Well, that's a different interpretation. They're saying it's coming under your control now because they were doing fine without you, they were experienced, they knew what they were doing. So why the shift? What's the purpose of the shift?
The shift is, to answer your question is, it was, I believe it was some slight delay in inspections from, where inspections were not conducted timely and people were waiting.
No, they were doing great with the inspections. You're not even doing good with all of your inspections and nobody shifting your stuff nowhere. People think it was more of a racist thing than it was, they weren't doing inspections. These were professional, black firefighter inspectors who were doing an excellent job, but now it wanted to be shifted under your department and it wasn't because of any incompetency of their inspections or lack of doing the amount of inspections they were supposed to do. You haven't done all the inspections y'all were supposed to do either, nobody shifting you anywhere. So I don't think that was the reason, but continue.
Yeah, no, definitely. I, I agree with you that that it's definitely not the way I'm looking at this. It's just a coordination issue and, you know, our inspection rate is like we're conducting called development inspection within two to three business days. I don't know what's the current rate for FDNY is today, but our inspection is two to three business days and then our enforcement side, we do this safety inspection, which classified with, as a priority A within four hours. So it's, we definitely very proud of our service level. As again, I don't want to criticize or say anything about FDNY, I'm not in possession of their.
Do you know where the plan is at, at this point?
At this point, we're still negotiating.
Negotiating?
Right. So nothing yet affirmative I can report to you, but if you willing, you know, I will keep you posted.
Well, I'd like to be kept updated on that and how the negotiations are going. I'd like to be very, very informed on that.
Councilmember?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Excuse me, Chair. Councilmember, I could just add one piece to that. At DOB, our staff is 49% people of color, our managerial staff.
I'm not talking about DOB's staff, I was talking about the specific structural inspectors. I'm not talking about diversity in DOB, you know, like, I know all the statistics, I'm talking about not for the structural inspectors, it's a little different.
Yeah.
So it's not, you don't have to tout a, you know, DOB 49%, the whole agency, I'm talking about the structural inspectors. Do you have that number?
I don't have the number.
Right. Well, that's what I'm talking about, not, not all, not the whole agency.
Thank you, Councilmember Barron. Thank you. Thank you. So, so please do follow up on, on Councilmember Barron's question there and I, I know that there is, there's a lot to, to be determined with the FDNY and DOB inspectors, but let's continue to have those conversations. I now want to turn it over to Councilmember Felice.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Sanchez, for this hearing. Thank you to colleagues who have joined and thank you to those who have resolutions and bills before this committee today. So a few questions. Borough President Mark Levine recently announced a very creative plan to take down sidewalk sheds, called for streamlined permit to get construction done. called for streamlined permit to get construction done. What's your opinion on that? Is that feasible? And do you agree with that plan?
Yes, sidewalk shed is definitely a problem in, in our city. As you see, it's a lot of areas covered by the sidewalk sheds. You see this, a lot of them in the commercial corridors, and we understand that's a problem. I believe if not, about ten thousand sheds or buildings covered with a shed at this given, at this moment. Some of the shed located, some of the set in place for more than five years. So to, to enforce shed removal, to improve the optic of this, we obviously, we created long-standing shed program. And following on those sheds, we're standing five or plus more years. If, it's about hundred eighty sheds at this moment. Right now, it's being part of, part of this program. In addition, you realize that the long-standing shed is bad when it's next to it, even new shed erected. So realizing this problem, as I said, to improve the optics of the public inconvenience for pedestrians, we decided to follow any shed and we initiated pilot program, which is in a community border one, one oh one and one oh five in Manhattan, which is commercial, mainly commercial area with a lot of sheds covered. We initiate program, whenever you install the shed, we're following up with email, "How can we help you to file, to proceed, to replace your application?" Which is also it, of course, shed installation in first place and to, to eliminate the shed. With precedent proposal, I especially like suggestion to, 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 to improve access to low-interest loans for people to implement repairs. So obviously, this Department of Buildings, we cannot provide this access, but we fully support this because we have to eliminate when construction work costs a lot more in much more efficient and cheaper ways just to continue paying rent for the sheds in, sheds in place. This obviously kind of affect our quality of life, pedestrian experience, businesses. So this is sort of a couple things which we're doing right now to make sure that shed disappears. New code allowed for shed, for different models of sheds, not different models, for more modified shed. We suggest to increase span, so give it a little more light to the pedestrians on the sidewalk. And we're looking for, for R F P request for, we currently reviewing what we should do. Maybe we create new shed competition if we need it. Because we, we cannot eliminate completely sheds. They need it, okay? So it's, it's, sometimes sheds is a good sign. It means construction, economic activity. Because any extension of a second story high, you need to install the shed. So sometimes that's a good thing. But we're trying to mainly, to eliminate sheds which affected by local law eleven, for example. And owners might not have sufficient funding to complete repairs. And as a result, they keep, keeping the shed in place and just paying rent.
Yeah, and I guess getting a little bit more specific, what are examples of processes that could be streamlined to, to speed up construction?
First of all.
If you have any now.
Right. I'm gonna give you from my point of view because it's from Department of Buildings' point of view. Because obviously, as I said, we don't have, we cannot financially have help to owners. But as I, we, we have small business improvement team which can help. If building owner needs help to understand facing, to understand how to process, to process applications through the Department of Building, to, to file a job. We have access to our engineers who, as I said, is extremely experienced person who can provide advice, how to address the problem. So it's, these facts keep, keep adding up. But majority of people complaining that it's, it's financially feasible instead of performing the repairs, keep the shed in place. And with that, as I said, it's like we're suggesting change the facing of your construction. We're looking into, shed is not, I would say for whole. It's just could be, shed is one of the elements which you could use for public, for pedestrian protection. You may want to use netting to encapsulate the facade. You may want to install some kind of deployable cantilever structure to protect. So we, we have to find, we keep looking for ways to improve this. I find most efficient, technically efficient, to recommend to the, to the developers and building owners.
Got it. Chair, I see my time is up, but if I could just conclude with another.
Sure, go ahead.
Yep, so a few questions, all which are related and all which are also related to the questions that were mentioned earlier. Are D O B staff salaries competitive? How quickly do people or staffers generally get a raise? Would you say, what is the department doing to retain staff? And also, is retention a problem in the department?
I'll start with retention. It's, I, I can't say it's an issue, but we're doing what we can to keep employing players in, in place. And as I said, we introduce a lot of factors to, to, to make sure that people understand the value of being employee of Department of Buildings. And to certain extent, local law ninety-seven, local law eleven. This is all one of the nations first we're doing in a, and being part of it is obviously, it's a great achievement for any person and we could be reflected in his resume for future life. So it's, we're trying to introduce this first. We're providing additional training to our inspectors, to our planning centers. We're introducing new opportunities for person to be, to be promoted. For example, right now, we're kind of trying to establish, since Department of Building does not have access to project manager title, because we're not managing any capital project. In fact, we're managing project, but not capital. And we're introducing title, senior plan examiner, to introduce new opportunity to be promoted for non-licensed plan examiner. We obviously provide the training for people to become architect and engineers. Department of Building compensate people for expenses associated with license renewals. So it's, it's all these factors we, we make it, all this, we make it factor when we're trying to retain employees. And this is, has double role because we kind of raised the value and it's raised the value for outside individuals as well. Our internal value raised and it caused, in fact, that it's outside value raised as well. And we, we have, you know, trying to compete with the industry to, to holding our employees. Obviously, benefit, benefits package is great with Department of Building. So it's, it's a lot of factors.
Thank you.
If I could just add to what the Commissioner said, Councilmember. In the past two quarters, we've had eighty-five promotions of our staff. And we understand our vacancy rate is an issue. We've done a hundred and forty-five recruitment efforts in those two quarters. And from job fairs to postings to list calls, we, and we try to hire from a diverse pool of candidates. So we do job fairs at the N double A C P, L G B T Q Community Fair Centers, Alpha Phi Alpha. And technical positions, we're posting at the school, the Society of Women Engineers and the National Society of Black Engineers. So we're looking to diversify our ranks and to continue growing the agency. So we're, we understand and we're, we're looking out for it. We're doing our best where that's concerned.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember, and thank you for those responses. I want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmembers Caban, Wrestler, Narcisse, and Dinowitz, who had to step out. I'm gonna ask a series of more questions and then I'll turn it over to, to colleagues if they have additional questions. So moving to local law ninety-seven. Can you, to start for this important policy, can you share what is the amount of funding, both personnel services and other than personnel services, as well as the associated headcount associated with allocating the implementation of local law ninety-seven?
So, good afternoon. So the Sustainability Bureau actually has a budgeted headcount of seventy-four authorized budgeted headcount. Local law ninety-seven has eleven. So we anticipate that additional resources will be requested and we will be negotiating them. As we've testified last year to the council, we were waiting for the work of the advisory committee to wrap up, understanding that more work was going to be coming. So we're in the process of trying to augment the local law ninety-seven team at D O B. Fortunately, right now, there's six, six vacancies in that group. The deputy commissioner has been working very closely with Nadia and her team to make sure that we're prioritizing those positions to be hired. And hopefully, we'll be seeing some movement so that we can attract folks to come and work on, on this very important initiative. So the issue is going to be, at the same time that this law is being implemented and we're going to be trying to hire people, the industry and building owners are also going to be looking to hire these same people. So again, we continue to be in a double-edged situation where we're trying to drive and facilitate change and hire folks that are typically hard to recruit. So this is the situation that we're constantly in. But the good news is echoing the comments that the Commissioner made, folks who are very dedicated and want to be part of this change are going to be very enthusiastic to be joining the Department of Buildings to do this work.
Thank you. So when you say that there are six vacancies, that's out of the eleven local law ninety-seven positions?
Yes.
Okay, that, that is more than half. How, how is D O B, can you remind us how D O B is working with the Chief Climate Officer in the implementation of local law ninety-seven?
D O B is tight contact with Chief Climate Officer in the city. They're working, I know it's, it's a lot of work, it's, work is tightly coordinated. As you know, this, our department is, our sustainability, we, I believe from last hearing, we were able to recruit a new deputy commissioner who in charge of full sustainability effort, including local law ninety-seven, Laura Popper. And she started, she's working very closely with Chief Climate Officers this time.
Are there D O B staff that are working, like D O B lines that are under the Chief Climate Officer or vice versa?
I don't believe so, no.
There's a, there's a segregation, but working together.
No, that's not the case. That's not the case. The, there's no overlap or detailing of staff at this time.
Okay. Thank you. So following up from a recent hearing where we were talking about nicer to, an upcoming nicer to report on renewable energy credits, we were told that it was expected next month. Is that still on track?
Yes, yes, it's still on track. We're working on the renewal, renewable energy credits.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving, moving forward to alternative compliance mechanisms, which has been a, a subject of, of questions and conversation here with you and the council. So we have seen news reports in the, in the last few days, in the last week, around carbon capture technology and carbon capture technology in particular that has been retrofitted to possibly be able to be used in apartment buildings. Usually, it's, you know, been used at big factories and, and larger sites. So is carbon capture technology currently being used or currently being considered as a compliance mechanism for local law ninety-seven?
Thank you for that question, Chair. So we've certainly heard from companies and building owners that are interested in using that technology, but it is relatively new technology and local law ninety-seven doesn't contemplate that technology in terms of how it could be used to, to offset emissions. So we're talking to the companies and the building owners that are interested in using that technology now. And we have a lot of questions about the technology ourselves. Specifically, you know, what happens to, to the carbon that's being captured. So we're asking them for more information and we're evaluating that technology, but, but we're not ready to determine how it could be used to, to comply with local law ninety-seven at this time.
Understood, thank you. And what is the context of pilots of this technology within the city of New York under D O B's knowledge?
So the city's not piloting this technology, but we're aware of companies piloting this technology for their own use.
Got it. Will D O B be undertaking a study of the risk benefits, worst-case scenarios for these technologies in residential buildings?
Yes, we're certainly going to evaluate the technology to see if it has any benefits and, and what those benefits are and how it could be used to, to comply with local law ninety-seven if, if that use is applicable, so, so we can certainly keep you updated on those efforts.
Thank you. And as of this time, is D O B aware of the risks to residents and offices and, and New Yorkers that should be avoided and, or, and/or mitigated with respect to carbon capture technology?
Not at this time, but we'll look into that as well.
Thank you so much. Okay, so turning to, turning back to construction site safety and, and compliance. Unfortunately, last week, the city saw our first construction fatality of this year when a sixty-four-year-old construction laborer died after a wall collapse at a Chinatown job site on Lafayette Street. OSHA counted the twenty-two construction worker deaths last calendar year, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, which surpassed the previous record of twenty in twenty fifteen. So how does D O B interpret these numbers? What, what is happening? Why are we trending in the wrong direction? And is the city's construction site safety training getting worse?
That's right. It's a very unfortunate accident happened at Lafayette Street over here in New Manhattan. And I just want to say, I just want to address the OSHA stats, that OSHA covering entire region, which might not be all the projects associated with D O B jurisdiction. So we, last year, we have only ten deaths on the construction site. Very unfortunate not to take responsibility of it, but I'm just saying, it's a reporting structure of OSHA is different because not all the buildings under D O B jurisdiction. And it might happen on M T A construction site, it may happen somewhere else, Port Authority construction site in New York area. But, you know, this is, we, we're looking at this very seriously. We're reviewing those reports because those workers work at for contractors who potentially might end up being canover sites as well. So it's, it's equally important to us and we don't want to remove yourself out of this discussion. So let's be honest about it. We have ten construction accidents and the first accident last year, we differently looked at it. I don't want to make any conclusion what's happened up there. We, we have only preliminary knowledge of situation and what caused the death of the worker. It's, it was preventable, I can say it right away. And what we do, we're trying to conduct proactive inspections. Because things like that, when you see the freestanding wall unsupported, if our inspector would be able to see this, and he probably would be pointed, or construction super, or any competent person probably would be able to point it out, to work it, it's unsafe conditions exist. So it's, we're trying to improve and then build upon that.
So.
Can you just bring it a little closer to you?
Sure. So just touching on when you were asking whether or not we thought that the, the training was being effective. I would say, based on the numbers that we see, in terms of over a quarter of a million people have their S S T, you know, training cards at this point, I would say that it's become very successful. And the thing that we've noticed with the compliance date, with workers who already had the training that had to get the new card to make sure that the enforcement is really strong, is the sites are actually really taking this seriously too. And hopefully, the training will drive a culture of safety on a site. That, that is really what we're hoping is going to happen with the, the worker training, is that folks realize that they need to prioritize training for themselves and for their fellow workers as well as the public. So we're hoping to see that over time, that less fatalities occur as well as less safety incidents occur on construction sites.
Thank you. Just following up here with, with the Lafayette, the Lafayette fatality, what are D O B's next steps in investigation here first? And disturbingly, is the, is the second question, the site where the hard hat died, D O B had previously issued five safety violations. Were those a result of proactive inspections? And a D O B spokesperson said the violations had been resolved, but the violations were technically still open because the contractor had not yet filed the appropriate paperwork certifying that the problems were addressed. So can you please also elaborate on how D O B's protocol permitted a stop-work order to be discontinued if the appropriate paperwork had not been certified? So next steps, was this proactive inspections and what happened with the paperwork?
Just to address that this particular site that violating condition, if I remember correctly, were caused by overloading of construction materials required to be used during demolition to support the demolition. And our inspector observed that these conditions, observed that overloading, I believe it's second. that overloading at, I believe it's second floor level, and as a result of it, partial stop-work order was issued along with violations. But, it has to be remembered, violations still remain open, but partial stop-work order was resolved, because those conditions was remedied, and whatever material was stored, were replaced, or were restored somewhere else. So, that's what address your question regarding partial stop-work order. Violations may take, may exist, and it takes ECB hearing to, they want to get that in court, so obviously, and to explain what's happening. But, in terms of proactive inspection, I believe this partial stop-work order was a result of our proactive inspection. What's following next, as I said, it seems to be, they had this unsupported masonry wall, which was freestanding with lateral supports, weakened by demolition process, and we still cannot say precisely, I didn't have access to the witnesses, what caused the death, either collapse of the wall first, or collapse of the lateral supporting a floor beam, and after that, it's follow-up with, with the wall, which eventually caused the death of this person who was working a level below. Definitely, it's a lesson to be learned over here, because it's a competent person, construction super, most likely should be notifying worker, instructing him, explaining what's a safe process, what's a safe phasing of work supposed to be done in a vicinity of wall. First of all, this wall should not be left unsupported. So, it's a bottom line of this.
And do we know if the appropriate levels of site supervision were present at this work site?
I cannot say, I cannot confirm. I'm not privy to this information, Chair.
Are you, is that going to be asked? Is that going to be investigated?
We, we're part of investigation if it will be requested by district attorney. So, at this time, it's being investigated by DOI, district attorney office. So, if it will be requested, we definitely will be part of it. But, at this time, we just submitted our report based on preliminary, preliminary observation at the site, when we saw it, we just documented all conditions for future investigation. But, as I said, witnesses is extremely important to establish precisely what's happened first, second, and what caused the death.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And just appreciating the goal toward changing the culture, toward a culture of safety on these work sites. You know, we have carrots, we have sticks, we have rules, these SST cards are a major step in the right direction. But, can you, can you talk to us about the penalties that a work site like Lafayette would face, right, for such violations, unsafe, unsafe conditions on a site? What kind of penalties do they face, and do you think that they're high enough?
Yes, there definitely will be some violations issued for failure to comply. Obviously, we saw some other conditions, so multiple violations were issued. I cannot confirm, say precisely what was issued, but definitely one of them was failure to comply, failure to maintain. This is always related by code. These two violations most likely were issued right away. In addition, the biggest penalty, we have to understand, is a stop-work order was issued. And this is, I believe, a big penalty to the construction site, to the developers for not following the required rules, because stop, job will be stopped until, on investigation complete, until necessary measures implemented to document it to us. With that, another penalty is we investigating contractor and construction super. We conducted fully, we sweep all the projects conducted by, where this contractor, particularly GC, has permits open, and the same apply to the construction super.
Got it. Thank you, thank you so much. Before I continue, I want to give a chance to my colleagues who are present. Councilmember Lincoln Ressler, would you like to ask your question?
Thank you so much, Chair Sanchez. It's a pleasure to be with you, and really, really appreciate your tremendous leadership. And it is good to see the team from DOB. Commissioner, from the days you were a deputy commissioner in the Borough Office in Brooklyn, all the way to today, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I have always appreciated how effective you've been at cutting through the bureaucracy and solving problems. And so, I really want to thank you for your work. I'm very concerned about vacancies at DOB. I'll start with vacancies in the commissioner's office. I don't think it's fair to ask somebody to serve in the roles of first deputy commissioner and commissioner at DOB. They are two essential positions, and I just want to say that I hope, if anyone from City Hall is listening, that I hope that they fill the other position promptly, and so that we have the support and leadership that we need for the agency. I'm also concerned about, agency-wide, the reduction in positions. If I have this number right, my notes have it at an eleven percent reduction in the DOB staff as a result of pegs and eliminated positions. A hundred and thirty-three positions have been eliminated in FY23 and FY24 at DOB. We haven't seen an eleven percent reduction in housing starts, we haven't seen an eleven percent reduction in applications to DOB. I don't understand how this mayor and OMB believe that we can safely build, as much as we are in New York City, with this kind of dramatic reduction in DOB staff, when in addition to that, we're facing an eighteen percent vacancy rate, separate and apart from the eliminated positions. So, my question is, could you walk us through, what are we doing to staff up as quickly as possible, and are there any ways that the council can help support efforts to ensure that DOB has the appropriate staffing in place?
So, there's a couple of questions. Good afternoon. So, yes, we did, we were, we were part of the citywide vacancy reduction plan, and part of that plan included ninety-four positions during the January plan, as well as the prior plan reduction. So...
How many total positions have been cut at DOB during FY23 and FY24?
Budget to budget, it's a hundred and forty positions between the two years.
Hundred and forty positions. And that is over ten percent of the budgeted agency headcount.
So, but also, you have to, we have to look at it in context of what the total budget was. The high vacancy rate is attributed to the fact that the budget increased, and then hiring lagged, right? So, that's also been contributing to the high vacancy rate.
No, separate and apart from the high vacancy rate, you've seen an exceptional reduction in your headcount. I just think it's unconscionable. When it comes to the amount of construction, my constituents struggle to get the attention from DOB that they deserve, because we don't have the staff. And I'm deeply frustrated by it, and I'm concerned for our collective safety, because of, I think reckless decisions by this administration to reduce headcount, eliminate positions, and not prioritize hiring. So, I just, you know, I think a lot of the responsibility falls at the doorstep of City Hall and OMB, but I do think that every agency can and should be doing more to expedite hiring, and I'd like to understand what it is that you all are doing.
So, I can turn it over to Nadia, who's...
So...
Thank you for the clear answers.
Absolutely. The hiring freeze hurt a lot of agencies, including ours, but when it was lifted in December, we did start hiring at a higher rate of speed. I think we hired a hundred and forty people in the last two quarters. I just want to double-check that one second.
Is that a net increase in the DOB staff?
Well, no, because there's also separations as well. But, we did hire a hundred and forty in the last two quarters, but there also have been separations as well. So, there, I can get, I can get back to you on the exact numbers of the net gain, but we did, we are hiring as much as possible. We do have very hard-to-recruit titles, and it's a lot to compete with, but we're, we're trying the best we can. Once the hiring freeze was lifted, we do our OMB submissions every month, the first week of every month, and we've put several through, and they're coming back to us. And, but every month, we do more, and we try to hire and promote as much as possible, but I can get back to you on all those numbers.
I hope that leadership in this administration will start streamlining and expediting the hiring processes. If there's any partnerships that we can provide in District 33 to recruit and attract talent, we want to help in any way we can. So, please let us know. That's for the very hard-to-attract positions, but for the general positions you're trying to fill. And just one final question, if I can. I think I heard Chair Sanchez ask at this, but my notes have it that we're at seven people that are in the local law, kind of in the office within DOB that oversees Local Law 97. Is that right? Is that the actual headcount?
The budget is eleven.
Budget is eleven, but filled?
But, we have, we have six active, five vacancies. And we will be negotiating to look to increase the resources to support Local Law 97.
I just have to say that this is the most important law that's come out of the council in years, and for us to successfully implement it and drive down emissions from our largest source, we're going to need a lot more people. And we pushed as a council for the increase in the headcount last year. It's very disappointing to not see the positions filled. We hope you all will expedite that hiring and do more, so that we can ensure broad compliance. We are on the doorstep of 2024, when the worst offenders need to start getting their act together, and if we don't have the staff at DOB, it's not going to happen. And the recs issue that still needs, we have rulemaking that still needs to be developed. And so, I know you have good people that are working on this, but it's not enough. We don't have enough good people. And so, I really, 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 really want to implore you all to prioritize more hiring.
I just wanted to add one thing to that. Every OMB submission, I go directly to sustainability first, and I ask which ones we're hiring there, because I know how crucial it is.
Thank you.
And we are on the same page for that concern, for sure.
Well, let us know how we can help. Thank you for the answer.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, councilmember. A couple of follow-ups there. Big vacancy, hi. Big vacancy, big vacancy, vacancies at DOB. So, ninety-four positions for savings of seven point six million dollars. The peg does not, did not remove specific lines or titles, and is drawn for, from the budgetary holding code. So, how is HPD, sorry, how is DOB thinking about the ninety-four positions that are being cut?
So, we spent a lot of time internally trying to figure out the best places to reduce the vacancies. We pretty much distributed them between the main category, position categories that we track in the agency, which are inspectorial, plan exam, technical titles, administrative support, and clerical support. And we pretty much, we did distribute reductions to those categories of positions pretty equally. We were exempted from cutting, I'm sorry, from reducing the inspector titles, but we did make a decision to reduce some of the inspectorial titles as part of that ninety-four reduction plan. And that had to be a balanced approach, because the technical titles and the inspectorial titles were exempt from the hiring freeze. It's just that there's, because they are hard-to-recruit positions, we needed to make some gains in the other positions that were subject to the hiring freeze.
Okay, so, thank you. And drilling down on inspectors, so hearing you say that the cuts are across the board on different titles, what is an inspector's average caseload?
We generally expect inspector to complete between six to eight, or six to ten inspections per day. Depends on the complicity of assignment, depends the size of the job, depends if inspector work for enforcement or development, because in development, sometimes inspector can spend, or compliance inspection, inspector may spend one day at one location continuously inspecting. But, in general, if you refer to enforcement inspection, safety inspection, complaints-related inspection, it should be six to ten. Right now, our average level is eight, but we, as I said, we're trying to improve this level. I believe we could do ten, and we're currently experimenting with using IT technology for navigating and dispatching inspectors to the location more efficiently, and cross-inspecting for variety of centralized units. So, this way, intensity of inspection will go up with the same stuff.
Got it. And so, you say six to eight inspections per day, closer to eight about now. What is the annual inspection capacity? Is that a hundred and thirty thousand that we saw this year?
We have about five hundred fifty-two inspections, so potentially, we could do about, we do three hundred thousand inspection per year.
Three hundred thousand. And does that include emergency inspections, like every single time that I call our deputy commissioner here when there's a fire, those are counted in there?
Yes, it's probably, I hope I don't need so many this year, so it's, but it does include, yes.
Got it, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to councilmember Mercedes Narcisse for a question.
Thank you, Chair Sanchez. Thank you, Commissioner. My question is about illegal, what we call conversion, basement conversion, right? One other thing, I may be wrong, that the community of color are more targeted. Maybe I'm wrong. So, can you share with me what zip code, and how many inspection that took place in the city for the past year? And if you can share the zip code, that would be very helpful.
As, you know, I was talking earlier about that, we have a dedicated unit, which we call Quality of Life, which perform an inspection of illegal conversion. I don't have it in front, I didn't expect this question in front of me, which most community, zip code or community involved, but we definitely can take a look at it and analyze the data. The unit is citywide, and initially, it was started in Queens, expanded to Brooklyn, and now it's like a citywide unit. And we can definitely provide you with the data, and the frequency of inspection, or violations issued for illegal conversion. But, in general, public advocate Jemani Williams was here before, and we talk about find a way to legalize this unit. I mean, just to vacating and throwing people on the street is not, is not the right way, and we see this, and we're really willing to be helpful to make sure that it's happening, and we have our own ideas on that.
It is a safety issue that I have concern, but I am for legalizing basement. But, what I don't want to see happen before we finalize, before the city step up and do our, our parts for people, black community, brown community, are getting some instances. And by the way, how do the initial, initial for the inspector to go out? Does it has to be by call, or it's on regular basis, or it is just randomly?
No, it's not random. Majority, if it's not all inspection generated by complaint. So, it's, you know, three women, complaint, and this is, you know, when complaint routed to the Quality of Life unit is, in most of the cases, is illegal conversion. We do not target any community or in any neighborhood in particular, as I said. It's only by complaints.
Okay. You can give the statistic, the data to the chair, so maybe the chair can share it, because I'm interested in that. I don't know by any chance if Local 196 probably was already asked. I'm concerned about the safety at the, at the side of construction side, development, because the complaint has been that there is no inspectors, and from what, the time I walk in, I think that was some of the question. Chair, is that the question you already asked?
Yeah.
I want to know how many inspector that you have now, that's going out on regular basis, and are we upped to parts of taking the step to make sure workers are safe?
We have five hundred fifty-two inspectors and staff right now. Out of five hundred fifty-two inspectors performing variety of inspection throughout the city, hundred thirty-eight inspectors directly dedicated to construction, construction site safety. So, it's, I believe we have sufficient number of inspectors to enforce our rules. On top of this, you know, as I mentioned before, we initiated construction sweep, because at the end of last year, we have construction, not the deaths, but construction incident, which was kind of rush of it, and we felt like we need to revamp our efforts, and we initiated sweep of all sites. We made the commitment to visit all construction sites, regardless, small or big. Okay, and at this moment, we are visited four thousand construction sites, and continue doing that. With, if you're concerned about cards, SST cards, you mentioned, so it's, at this moment, two hundred fifty thousand workers in possession of those cards, and what most important is not just not the card, importance that this worker completed forty hours of safety training, and that's the bottom line. So, that's why we want, because it's, industry was populated with fake cards, or fake providers give cards of variety. So, it's, we kind of straighten up this process, and initiated enforcement, soft enforcement, which expired on Monday. And if you find someone without card, or proper card on a construction site, we will issue five thousand dollars fine to the contractor, and five thousand dollars fine will be to the owner of the site.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you so much, councilmember. Okay, so, last round from me, and I'm not seeing colleagues here, so maybe this is the last round for now. Okay, so last round from me, and I'm not seeing colleagues here, so maybe this is the last round for now. So first up, I am hearing from advocates that DOB is not requiring landlords to show that they have obtained a DHCR approval for reductions or modifications of services before issuing permits for work that will substantially change the layout of a rent-stabilized tenant apartment. This was, I'm hearing it from advocates, it was also recently reported in Gothamist. So is there, are there particular times or reasons why DOB would or would not require landlords to show DHCR approval for changes that they wanna make to rent-stabilized apartments?
I, I don't think it's a true fact to say that we are not requiring, our form has specific question if this building contain rent-regulated apartments. And the owner of the building, the signature, under his own signature or her own signature, must state if it's, if it is, and if DHCR approval required. So to say that we are not asking for that, it's totally not correct. It's a part of our construction documents. And it's always, if you find a situation where it was not complete truthful statement, we issue stop work order and permit revocations, with obviously violations issued as well for that.
So the Department of Buildings does not have its own way of confirming with HCR, DHCR about the rent-regulated status of units within a building?
Uh, our system, our, our BIS system and the DAB now system contain that building contain rent-regulated apartment. So we can see it. So it's, we can confirm it correctly. But, uh, not all the construction activity must be, require DHCR approval. So that's why sometimes, not sometimes, we always rely on owner to be truthful about this fact. And if we see it is different, we obviously, uh, issue audit and application and stop work orders.
Do you do any auditing to, to check on the veracity of the landlords or owners' claims that there are, or, well, in the case that there aren't units?
We do so, and absolutely, yes, we do so. And, uh, I wanna say that rent, you know, population of rent-regulated apartments are very vocal. So if it's something inappropriate, we always get a call and we immediately follow up with the audit and process of, if not response, response received, we stop work order.
Thank you. Back to the fifty-one million dollar reduction in DOB's budget for, for this, this cycle. Fifteen million is attributed to savings with respect to DOB Now. Can you help us understand those savings on DOB Now?
Uh, yes, DAB Now, it's extremely, it's our first step to introduce, uh, virtual reality. So we eventually, uh, it's maybe primitive right here, I understand the smile. But, uh, yes, it is a first step. So it's, DAB Now took over certain duties performed by DAB in the past, by plan examiner, by our clerical staff, you know, by our auditors. So it's, uh, it's the same apply for inspection. So it's like certain information available to inspectors much faster than it needed. They don't need to spend time for research, so they can go more on a construction site, spend more time on the field instead of researching for information. So it's, I see the same, we can continue, I see that it's a way for us to find more efficiency, more expeditious, more frequency of, uh, our inspections and shortening our review time. And indirectly, as I said, my, my idea is to make construction cheaper and maybe develop construction products at more affordable price.
Okay, so there's no cutting back on the implementation of DOB Now? It's just been more efficient than anticipated?
Absolutely, right, it's more, it's captured a lot more than, uh, planning, you know, human can do.
So I just wanted to know, it, it's not a cut, it's because it's a, it's a contractual program, so it's money dropping out, right? So it's not like baseline funding. So as the project, um, gears up and reduces based on the contract capacity or the scope of the project, that's why you're seeing the variation. So it's, you're seeing, we're in the process of negotiating additional funding to support the next, uh, work that needs to be continued on DOB Now, and that will be part of the executive budget negotiations.
Thank you, that, that makes sense. Okay, so in, in the very beginning, you started talking about inspectors that could inspect different kind of work sites. Looking at the breakdown of inspectors, so you have three hundred and fifty-three, uh, construction inspectors, that's the largest sub-cohort. Then you have fifty-two plumbing inspectors, forty-six electrical, thirty-four elevator, eight crane, eight multidisciplinary, and one low-pressure boiler inspector. What's up with the one, the single person? Is there, there no one else at DOB, no other inspectors that can do that kind of inspection? And can you help me understand the eight multidisciplinary inspectors? What, what is it within their purview?
I'm, um, were you given, um, specific stats on discipline titles?
These are, these are from OMB. This is all I have, yep.
I, just to make sure I'm understanding your question. So the multidisciplinary inspector is a very unique title that was created with the intention to cross-train people in multiple disciplines, like electrical, construction, or plumbing and construction. So that way, we could, if we had inspection types that were multiple types on one site, then you could route, um, and efficiently have a multidiscipline inspector conduct those inspections. It was a big lift to get the title created, and it was also a big lift to cross-train staff. And then in terms of operationally how it works out in the construction field, construction, um, isn't always coordinated amongst the different disciplines. So the, the plan was to deploy these multidisciplinary inspectors. And, but the reality is, is that the, the work doesn't always happen at the same time. It does happen sequentially, and you're also dealing with different players in the industry. So if a plumber needs their stuff inspected, they're gonna schedule the inspection. And then if an electrician finishes their work, they're not necessarily coordinating amongst the trades unless it's under a general contractor, right? So, um, that is why there's so low number of multidisciplinary inspections. So it was a combination of us operationally structuring that work and continuing to allow people to be hired into that title. So it's definitely something worth revisiting to see. Now that we have DOB Now, there's more transparency, there's actually able to schedule stuff online. There may be an opportunity to try to revive that title and see if we can promote people into that title. So I don't know, that answered all of the questions.
That answered the, that answered one part. The other part was just why is there a lone low-pressure boiler inspector?
I, I don't believe this is correct number.
So I think what happened, um, there is also, there's high boiler, um, pressure boiler inspectors and low pressure. So again, it's just a matter of who we're able to recruit for. I'm not sure whether or not we're posting that job in particular. So it also, I think there's been a shift in terms of the number of, um, jobs required for boiler inspectors. So it's some, I don't, I don't know offhand, but we should, we should follow up.
I, I just need to verify because we have like twenty-three boilers inspectors. So it's between low and high-pressure boilers. So I'm not sure what this one, uh, it's, it's overall, we, we have to relook in our MMR because it's like we so much, we so dynamic organization right now, we changing a lot. So we wanna make sure that we're on the same page with where we're reporting. And I believe, hopefully by next hearing, we will work with, with members to clarify all of this because information has kind of become convoluted and mixed it up together.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, finally, on Get Stuff Built and Blast. So the Get Stuff Built was a report produced by the Building and Land Use Approval Streamlining Task Force, also known as Blast. It was convened last June and included a hundred eleven concrete actions that the city will take to create more housing more quickly by cutting red tape, streamlining processes, and removing bureaucratic obstacles that are slowing housing production and economic recovery, as you know. What are the key measures that are being taken to speed up and lower the cost of development by DOB? What are the metrics for success, and how much has been invested so far?
So we're following DAB's involvement this time in about six initiatives, uh, associated with Get Stuff Built report. So it's, uh, I don't know if you're interested to go in all particulars. So one of them was obviously coordination with FDNY to improve the service level. But, uh, we currently is negotiating, and it's not progressing really fast enough. But we're, we're looking into this and, uh, sharing our technology, sharing our knowledge, because our service level, as I said, two, three days, and we're still looking on improvement. So it's, I don't wanna comment today on FDNY's service level. We also have our specific, uh, practice of reviewing plans. So it's, we would like to share them with FDNY. Obviously, if the plans will be transferred, fire alarm and fire safety plans will be transferred to us, we will apply the same practice we do for regular review of our project because you could see service level justify our approach and give industry, uh, ready product to build, uh, much faster. Additional initiatives, we're looking into, uh, is SBS transfer of waterfront unit to the Department of Buildings.
Sorry, which unit?
Uh, SBS, Small Business, uh, Support.
Support team?
Support team, yes. Uh, SBS, uh, Waterfront Development Team being transferred to DAB. It makes a lot more sense for us to take it over. The process will take a little time because it's obviously, uh, we're working right now on the waterfront court, which is, uh, estimated to be completed in twenty twenty-five. And this, we're in the process of this, uh, development. And, you know, multiple other initiatives are being, uh, in, in the process of review. I don't know if I answered a question completely, so it's, it's so many directions we're going right now.
Yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd like, uh, maybe it's a follow-up conversation, but just to understand exactly where DOB is in the process of implementing those, those initiatives. It sounds like some of them are just getting started.
Correct, and they're all in the works. So it's like it's, we either negotiation, we preparing yourself for negotiation or working towards. So it's, uh, we, we keep you posted if you want, so it's just on the level as council member Baran wants on the FDNY review.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my final question on, on the Blast report. Does DOB anticipate, you, you all are a revenue generating agency, uh, different from many others. So does DOB anticipate that cutting red tape, that implementing any of these reforms is gonna result in reduced revenue for the City of New York?
No, no.
No, not at this time.
Not at this time, right. So it's anything should improve the revenue. As I said, we wanna make bottom line of all, uh, what we do in Adams Commission and Get Stuff Built, bottom line is generate economic activity. Okay, so we wanna be leader in the nation, in the nation. Because New York City is leader in so many aspects. So we wanna bring it, the city is easy to develop. We wanna bring more developers, more economic activity, we wanna more people move in, make our, uh, housing more affordable for people. So it's, uh, because all of this eventually benefit all of us. And we're kind of working in this direction. So it's, as I said, if, if anything, we're trying to make it easier, more attractive, more, uh, to bring it more to the city.
Well, thank you, thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you, Deputy Commissioners, thank you, leadership, for answering all of our questions today. I think I'll, I'll just by, by a closing note, just reemphasize that we wanna make sure that, yes, it's, it's a, it's a wonderful thing to see you focus on customer service, on improving efficiency, but just wanna be very mindful of any unintended consequences, right? You, you mentioned that there are gonna be changes in the way that, um, DOB carries out inspections and things like this. But there have been a dip in the numbers, and so where, where these performance indicators are showing changes, we wanna stay close to you on that and make sure that we're not having unintended consequences. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your cooperation and work with us, thank you.
So now we will take about a five-minute recess before starting with HPD. And I look forward to HPD's testimony.
And I look forward to HPD's testimony.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here on behalf of the Committee for Food Advocates and the National Coalition, as I'm sure you know. I'm going to try to be short and sweet because I know you have a long day and we have a whole bunch of people speaking on the issue. I'm here to talk about cafeteria enhancement experience and fully scaling in this current budget session. So just my way of back, our cafeteria enhancement experience is a model that was originated by the Department of Education. It modernizes the service lines to make it more food court style. The seating areas are much more student friendly, and we know that it has a huge impact. And we know that among other things, it can be fantastic press conferences for our high school. You chair and the chancellor and the other folks that this is something that everyone knows is a huge priority to transforming the school experience for all middle school and high school students. We know that many more students participate when the cafeterias are enhanced. It's cost effective and has a great impact. And it's done, there's background work that happens within two days within school and office of nutrition services. Has done a fantastic job of speeding that process up. Just this month, we've completed fifteen schools. So with the fifty million dollars that was secured last year in the budget, we now have eighty cafeteria completed and about another hundred fifteen or so with commitments for funding. So that gets us to about a third of the way there, about six hundred middle school and high school cafeterias. And for this to be an experience that all students have experience with in high school and middle school, we think this is the moment to make sure that that the financial commitment to two hundred million dollars in capital funds happens this year so that we know that all high school and middle school students have this experience. Just to show how this works, FBR High School in Brooklyn, pre, they just had their cafeteria redesign in January. Prior to the redesign, twelve hundred students ate. We feel that it's now twenty seven hundred students. So it's very dramatic. And we made these beautiful posters that we couldn't bring in because they were too big. So I'm going to read quotes from two principals. One that was in the Daily News, Principal Rashad Lee from Eagle Academy for Young Men in Ocean Hill. And what he said was, what I've seen overnight, literally, is the whole stigma of school food shifting because of the mere presentation of food given to them. And I'm just going to take one second. And then Principal Fareed Hisham from PS301 in South Bronx. Said cafeteria enhancement communicates to students and families that they are important, welcome, and their social, emotional wellness and health. I can't read my handwriting, which is never good. Are valued by the school as vital levers for success. So we're looking for two hundred million dollars to make sure that we have the commitment for all high school and middle school students to have this. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, Dr. Vargas. And I'm, okay, hello, my name is Dr. Anna Vargas. I'm a pediatric endocrinologist at Shola Hospital, New York Presbyterian. And I'm here on behalf of the American Academy of Pediatrics, Chapter Three, and on behalf of the Committee for Food Advocates. As I also testified before on behalf of Universal Free Lunch and the Sweet Tooth Act. And this is my famous sugar tube. And this is how much sugar is in a can of soda. And we cannot give these to our children in school or allow them not to have universal free lunch so that they go outside and have Takis chips and Ultra Process food along with these drinks. But to make a long story short, when I started my career over thirty years ago, I thought I was going to take care of autoimmune type one diabetes. Little did I know that shortly after starting my career, I started taking care of children with unknown diabetes, type two diabetes. And as I said before and I testified before, during the pandemic, we have seen a two hundred and fifty percent increase in the number of our children having type two diabetes. We're seeing fatty liver disease hypertension. Some of my patients are on the same medications as their grandparents, and this is unacceptable. I'm a believer that food is medicine. And having universal free lunch and having cafeterias. And I'm going to just give you a couple of quotes that I have from the data that we've received. As pediatricians, we've been able to witness the nutritional impacts of the participation in these programs. But most importantly, these children are consuming more foods, salads and vegetables. They're consuming three times the amount of bananas, peppers and tomatoes, four times the amount of apples, carrots and spinach, five times the amount of broccoli and thirty times the amount of lettuce and green beans from the program. Just to also give you some data that's out there. There was an adult study that showed two servings of food a day can decrease your risk of diabetes by thirty six percent. One serving of leafy green vegetables a day can decrease your risk of dementia by thirty percent. What we're doing to our children who participate in these programs is we're improving their long-term health. And these are our future leaders and we have to protect them. So I'm really, I actually have spoken to the youth food advocates. And, you know, their stories are heartwarming and give you tears like the stories from before. It's getting to the students, it's really getting to the students to consume higher dietary quality. But most importantly, they also socialize in the schools. If they're eating lunch in the schools, they're not leaving their schools and getting into trouble. So please, I advocate, we urge that we continue the investment in this program so that our children are healthy. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Bariya Dahiya?
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and City Council members. My name is Bariya Dahiya. I am a sophomore at Law &amp; City High School located in District Thirty. Our cafeteria takes great pride in serving over two thousand students a day. At LIC, we have four periods dedicated to lunch in order to provide each student with their nutrition. Since we're a pretty big school, it's common for us to have crowded and slow lunch lines, leading to students not having enough time or interest in eating. Students are very busy catching up on the schoolwork and whatever, and most importantly, relaxing before their rigorous academic day. I care about school food because it affects the vast majority of us. We have to sneak food into our classrooms every day. Some teachers don't allow food into the classrooms to give students helpless, hungry and tired. There are students who refuse to eat because they're uncomfortable eating in a space with no press. The new cafeteria redesign.
Sargent, are we ready? Good afternoon at four P M, four twenty-four P M, woo-hoo! And welcome back to today's hearing of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. We will turn to the Department of Housing Preservation and Development. To state, to set the stage, New York City and municipalities really across the United States are facing a dire housing crisis. It is not one that is felt equally by all New Yorkers, but one with a pain concentrated in low-income communities, communities of color, and one that is felt by underrepresented people like persons living with disabilities, sexual and gender minorities, religious minorities, they feel it the most. To the lowest-income New Yorker, being housing insecure means the looming threat of homelessness. This is the seventy percent of constituents that I represent in District Fourteen. It means children being forced to commute for long hours from shelter in Queens to their school in the Bronx, oftentimes missing invaluable class time because of the long distances traveled, missing key moments with their school friends. It means parents being far from families and social supports, and it means community-level stress that entire blocks and entire neighborhoods feel when their apartments are falling apart, when heating is insufficient, when they look at their paychecks and their bills at the end of the month and know full well that they will not be able to make ends meet. As we know, the manifestation of that community-level stress ripples through the economic insecurity, food insecurity, poor health outcomes, and ultimately even violence within communities. The urgency of this situation is borne out by HPD's own housing vacancy numbers. In 2021, a staggering fifty-three percent of renter households were rent burdened, paying over thirty percent of their household income in rent. And that's nearly one million New York City households. Of those, almost six hundred thousand households were severely rent burdened, paying over fifty percent of their household income in rent. And the median asking rent for all units that were vacant and available to rent was two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Based on affordability and income, most renters could not afford the most, the greater part of available units. And in fact, New York City's median income would need to double in order for New Yorkers to be able to afford the median rent. When considering our lowest-income households in the city, the HVS finds an extreme vacancy shortage at below one percent in the lowest, the apartments that rent for the lowest levels. This is the lowest that it's been in over thirty years. And it's no surprise to those of us who live with and serve these households day in and day out. And with this, I turn to HPD. You have the gargantuan mission to lead the city's response to this crisis on behalf of the city of New York. By some estimates, that looks something like by 2030, producing an additional five hundred sixty thousand units of housing to keep pace with increasing demand at varying levels of affordability. HPD's fiscal 2024 preliminary budget totals in one point two billion dollars, roughly one percent of New York City's expense budget, a decrease of sixty-one point six million from fiscal 2023 budget adoption. The reduction includes a program to eliminate the gap or peg of fifteen point one million in the fiscal 2023 November plan and a three point six million dollar cut in the fiscal 2024 preliminary plan. Pegs include cuts to supportive housing production and the removal of ninety-seven full-time positions, although inspectors are exempted. As previously discussed, the need for affordable housing is exploding post-pandemic in New York. Yet at the same time, the number of affordable units created or preserved by HPD is falling. Total affordable housing starts declined by forty-four percent between fiscal 2021 and 2022, according to the mayor's management report, with sixteen thousand four hundred twenty-eight units started in the last fiscal year. The trend line continues to decrease in fiscal year 2023, with only two thousand three hundred fifty-nine starts in the first four months of the year. This pace would keep us well below the intended target of eighteen thousand housing starts, which itself was reduced by this administration from twenty-five thousand, which was the previous goal. The slowdown, according to the mayor's management report, results from a shortfall of staff and rising construction costs. The data show that the slowdown in housing production is even starker among very low and low-income dedicated units. Those New Yorkers that earn below fifty percent of the area median income. And I always highlight that in my district, the area median income is below twenty-eight percent. As a candidate, the mayor pledged a two point five billion dollars in capital commitments per year at HPD. Although his ten-year housing capital plan is historically large at twenty-three billion, the five-year plan totals at nine point two billion, which is three point three billion dollars short of the target he set for the agency as a candidate. Even if more capital funding were added, HPD's challenges on the expense side with staffing in program areas like development and project management would likely continue to throttle construction. I look forward to hearing what HPD is doing to turn this around, including through moving toward higher salaries and hybrid schedules. There is a critical need for affordable housing rentals and home ownership opportunities throughout the city, and more must be done in the fiscal 2024 budget process to meet the need. HPD also plays a critical role in conducting inspections for potentially dangerous housing conditions, such as lead and heat. The PMMR reveals that in the first four months of fiscal 2023, HPD closed emergency complaints in thirteen point six days, about a day and a half slower than its target of twelve days. Non-emergency complaints face deeper delays. The total rose to twenty-five point nine days, almost six days slower than HPD's target of twenty days. These delays could have severe safety implications for the public. HPD reports over a hundred inspector vacancies, seeing the connections. The preliminary plan begins to roll out elements of the mayor's housing blueprint. I am pleased to see that among the modest new needs introduced, HPD receives nine additional inspectors to re-inspect self-closing doors. This was in response to local law sixty-three that the council passed after the Twin Parks tragedy in January twenty-two, which made us lose seventeen New Yorkers. Another new need of interest totals at about three million dollars over four years to help identify source of income discrimination. The committee would like to ensure that HPD's new work aligns with the key role of the city's Commission on Human Rights, or CCHR, in combating source of income discrimination. Whether on preservation, new construction, supportive housing or inspections, the department has your cutout, your work cut out for you. The challenge is real, but the council is here to support in your ambitious initiatives that will set New York City on a path to meeting our goals. The governor's housing compact calls for eight hundred thousand new units statewide within a decade, while the mayor's moon shoot announced in December reaches for five hundred thousand new units over the next decade. But that level of production and for that production to be deeply affordable and promote low and middle-income homeownership will take a serious commitment and deliberate changes to zoning, funding and more. Thanks once again to the committee staff who have helped prepare for this hearing. And another reminder for members of the public who would like to testify to please fill out a witness slip with a sergeant of arms so that we can put you in the queue. HPD is kindly reminded to please keep your oral testimony to under fifteen minutes. And I will now pass it to our committee counsel to swear in HPD leadership before turning over to, for testimony.
Thank you, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
Yes.
Thank you, you may begin when ready.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Turn that off instead of on. It's, you know, you have a little kid, every hour feels like two A M.
Yeah.
I just want to acknowledge that we have been joined by council member Brewer, and we are still joined by council member Barron and council member Dinowitz. Thank you, Commissioner.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Sanchez, members of the New York City Council Committee on Housing and Buildings. I am Alolfo Carrion Jr., Commissioner of the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development. And I'm joined by members of our agency's senior leadership team. At the dais here, to my right is the First Deputy Commissioner Ahmed Tagani. To my left is our Deputy Commissioner for Finance and Administration, Gardier Caphart. And we also have with us Chief of Staff and Deputy Commissioner for External Affairs, George Sarkisian. Deputy Commissioner for Enforcement and Neighborhood Services, Anne Marie Santiago. Deputy Commissioner for Policy and Strategy, Brendan McLaughlin. Our Deputy Commissioner for Development, Kimberly Darga. And a host of assistant commissioners. We travel deep, you know, we want to make sure we're ready for you. Last year, when I testified before the council on the agency's budget, we were just finalizing our, housing our neighbors, a blueprint for housing and homelessness. Today, we're nine months into our plan, and our dedicated team has been working diligently and resourcefully to tackle the housing affordability crisis and get New Yorkers into safe, high-quality and affordable homes. This administration has made an unprecedented twenty-three billion-dollar investment in affordable housing, and the preliminary budget funds many of our blueprint strategies to expand access to affordable housing, advance equity and fair housing, and keep New Yorkers safe in their homes. I will begin my testimony by providing a brief overview of our agency's fiscal year twenty-four proposed budget before describing how the funding will help us meet our mission. And then we'll be happy to take questions and let our folks step up to the dais as needed in their areas of expertise. HPD's preliminary fiscal year 2024 expense budget is one point one nine billion dollars, which includes two hundred and twenty-three million dollars that's passed through funding that goes to the New York City Housing Authority. So this actually leaves our ag- So this actually leaves our agency with, with an expense budget for the coming fiscal year of 971 million dollars. Roughly eighty percent of our agency's 971 million-dollar fiscal year 20, 24 expense budget comes from federal grants appropriated annually by Congress and can only be used as outlined in federal regulations. Most of this funding is allocated for Section Eight housing choice vouchers and other rental assistance programs. The bulk of the remaining federal grants we receive come from the Community Development Block Grant Program and Home Investment Partnerships Program, which must be used to support specific objectives related to the neighborhood development and housing development. This funding supports the core of HPD's programs and operations. The balance of our agency's expense budget consists of about a hundred and eighty million dollars in city funds and a relatively small amount of state and other grants totaling 1.7 million dollars. The city funds are used for the administration of our agency and to fill gaps in programs and services that are not eligible for federal reimbursement or require a local matching contribution. This requires us to be very creative when designing and implementing new programs and services in order to maximize this limited city resource that we get. HPD's capital budget for fiscal year 2024 is 1.65 billion dollars, of which, again, 156 million is a pass-through to the New York City Housing Authority's Permanent Affordable, Affordability Commitment Together Program, popularly known as PACT, leaving us with a balance of 1.49 billion dollars of capital. Almost 100% of our capital plan is funded by city sources, as you all know. And the remaining 2% is funded by the Federal Home Block Grant for Affordable Housing. Let me talk a little bit now about expanding access to affordable housing. One of our three, of one of our core priorities as an administration is to expand access to affordable housing to all New Yorkers. We cannot meet the scale of the housing crisis we face without significantly, significantly increasing the supply of new housing everywhere in the city. In Mayor Adams's Get Stuff Built Plan, the mayor set a moonshot goal to build 500,000 new homes in New York City over the next ten years and proposed zoning changes through the City of Yes Plan to help meet this ambitious goal. With your help and partnership, we can unlock the potential for tens of thousands of new homes by increasing the floor-area ratio for all types of affordable housing, making commercial conversions easier, allowing more housing types and sizes, and reducing costly parking mandates in favor of housing. The council is also a critical partner in the land use process. And we rely on your support to deliver much-needed housing to all New Yorkers in every neighborhood and make New York City a city of yes. And let me just insert here informally our gratitude for the leadership of the council, the Land Use Committee, you as Chair, Madam Chair, the Speaker. In some of the recent rezonings and upzonings that we've been able to achieve in the Bronx and Queens that allow for the production of a lot more housing, we look forward to continuing that kind of collaboration. Last fiscal year, of the total number of affordable homes we created and preserved, nearly 10,000 were new construction. You should know that this is the second highest on record for the agency in new construction. We remain committed to deepening the affordability of the homes we finance. Last year, sixty-four percent of the new homes we subsidized were affordable to people earning and, and households earning up to 50% of AMI. More importantly, 95% were affordable to those earning up to 80% of AMI. So by the federal standard, the lion's share, 95% of the housing, reaches low-income families. We understand the commitment and the need to go deeper. I want to thank this city council for being a great partner to HPD so we can continue to ramp up production to meet growing demand. Despite supply chain challenges and national labor shortages, we are making strides in creating new affordable housing. We hired 218 new employees in 2021, 442 new employees in 2022. And so far this year, we've hired 138 new employees to aggressively continue to fill vacancies. We're also excited about the tentative agreement with DC-37. You all know HPD is a DC-37 shop, which would benefit a huge part of our workforce. There's still more to do, but the team at HPD continues to expand the supply of affordable housing to meet demand. We also want to be responsive to the immediate housing needs of New Yorkers today. As we can, as we committed to in the housing blueprint, we're working to move New Yorkers into housing more quickly and seamlessly. Last year, we connected more New Yorkers to HPD-financed affordable housing than ever before. Eleven thousand households, including 2,300 households experiencing homelessness. We've eliminated, eliminated overly burdensome or redundant steps to improve the lease-up process. For example, we now allow Section Eight or City FEP's voucher holders to prove their eligibility with their subsidy qualification rather than having to resubmit documents to the city all over again. We're continuing to work to make every part of the lease-up process as efficient and user-friendly as possible. And here I will tip my hat to the city hous, uh, the Chief Housing Officer of the city, who's made very clear that this is a huge priority for us. We're, we're aligned with her and working vigorously on that. Let me speak to you a little bit about advancing equity and fair housing. Ultimately, our efforts to reduce administrative burden are not just about efficiency. This work is all about advancing equity and fair housing for all. And the city has taken several actions in recent years to, to advance fair housing as a part of the Where We Live NYC Plan, which you're all familiar with. This plan was first released in 2020 and was inspired by the 2015 rule issued by the U.S. Department of Housing and Development to guide cities and counties to affirmatively further the goals of the Federal Fair Housing Act, signed by my former boss, the President of the United States, President Obama. We recently published our first progress report, which shows over three-quarters of our eighty-one commitments are either complete or underway, including increasing down payment assistance to break, assistance to break down barriers to homeownership and expanding anti-displacement initiatives citywide. Our administration is committed to making the dream of homeownership a reality for more New Yorkers, particularly in lower-income communities and communities of color that have been historically excluded from opportunities to build and maintain family wealth. The mayor has committed 53 million dollars in city tax levy and federal home funds over the next five fiscal years, out to 27, to expand homeownership initiatives, including our Home First Down Payment Assistance Program, which has leveraged more than 50 million dollars to date to help over 3,000 low-income families purchase their first homes. Additionally, funding will allow us to serve twice as many first-time homebuyers, about 200 every year. Our other housing programs, Home Fix and the Homeowner Help Desk, are also funded to help even more homeowners keep and maintain their homes, a critical service for homeowners at risk of displacement due to rising operating and maintenance costs, foreclosure, scams, and other challenges that homeowners face. These programs also assist many older New Yorkers, many, many of whom are likely to live on a fixed income, to remain in their homes and neighborhoods by providing access to forgivable home repair loans and estate planning services. In his recent State of the City address, the mayor committed to investing in tenant protections. And the preliminary, preliminary budget includes 22 million dollars in new funds for a fair housing testing contract and funds to expand our partnership, Partners in Preservation Program and our Anti-Harassment Unit. New Yorkers who rely on rental assistance are still facing source of income discrimination, as you all know, in this, in the city's housing market today. So HPD will use these new funds to work with partners to design, test, and implement strategies to more effectively identify and root out housing discrimination. We're also expanding our Partners in Preservation Program into priority areas citywide. Through this program, we work in partnership with community-based organizations, legal service providers, and other government agencies to identify and proactively address tenant harassment in rent-regulated buildings. The initial pilot reached over 3,000 households, formed 72 tenant associations, and trained more than 350 new tenant leaders. This expansion will allow us to protect even more New Yorkers. And finally, we're also adding the additional staff to our Anti-Harassment Unit, which identifies buildings where owners harass tenants, conduct, conducts inspections and refers buildings to our Housing Litigation Division. Our Enforcement and Neighborhood Services team works tirelessly to protect tenants and ensure landlords meet their responsibilities. So we're glad to add staff to this important unit as well. As the council knows, HPD enforces the New York City Housing Maintenance Code on behalf of tenants by prot, uh, responding to 311 complaints from New Yorkers and proactively identifying buildings where they may be, uh, there may be more systemic problems. We respond to every complaint while prioritizing immediately hazardous conditions, such as lack of heat and hot water, as well as fire safety and lead-based paint hazards. And last year, we conducted more than 738,000 inspections and issued more than 731,000 violations. When owners failed to correct emergency violations, we stepped in to enforce emergency repairs in more than 42,000 homes. I'm very grateful, exceedingly grateful, to our housing inspectors, who are critical to this work, and we continue to build up this team. Thanks to the, the support of many council members, over 400 people attended our most recent job fair for housing inspectors. So thank you to the council members that spread the word. We hired 44 inspectors who completed training last week and are now ready to go into the field. And we established start dates for another two classes of inspectors. On the Neighborhood Services side, our mobile outreach team is gearing up for another round of HPD in your district in collaboration with the council. So I'd ask you to please reach out to schedule time for our outreach van to visit your district and share housing resources directly with your constituents. Finally, we have also been hard at work to ensure that homes financed by the city meet our high standards for design and climate resiliency and that property owners have the resources and support to meet those goals. We recently released new design guidelines for preservation, which ensure that buildings we finance reduce carbon emissions through strategic building electrification and efficiency measures, that they're more resilient to flood and heat risks by incorporating requirements like cooling for seniors and resources for tenants in flood-plone area, prone areas, and improving indoor air quality by setting standards for ventilation, material safety, mold, and pest control. The new guidelines will help the city meet its ambitious climate goal of 40% greenhouse gas reduction by 2030 while incorporating best practices for resiliency, health, and safety in existing multifamily buildings. We will soon be releasing important updates to our design guidelines for new construction projects. I was glad to join council member Hudson last month for the signing of Intro 676A, which requires new homes financed by the city to incorporate universal design. We wholeheartedly agree that our homes must be adaptable to the needs of New Yorkers with disabilities and older New Yorkers to make this a fair city that works for everyone. And in closing, ultimately, that's what we're to do here, to ensure New Yorkers can afford to live, work, and thrive in this great city. But we cannot do it alone. We must work in lockstep at the local, state, and federal levels to secure more resources to stably and safely house more families and individuals in need. On the federal front, we are facing a fiercely divided Congress, which makes the proposals for additional affordable housing resource, resources in the president's budget unlikely to be enacted this year. With the threat of very real funding cuts from the House of Representatives, it is critical that the council raise its collective voice to fight for a fully-funded housing and urban development budget. At the state level, we're calling on Albany to unlock several tools that will make a real difference in our work to create and preserve safe, affordable housing. Regulatory changes that facilitate commercial conversions and legalize basement apartments, reformed tax incentives to help create and preserve affordable housing, and increased floor-area ratio cap to allow more affordable housing, and long overdue improvements to HPD's loan authorities that are stuck way in the past. I want to thank the council for being a critical partner in fighting to get the resources we need and in advancing legislative priorities and reforms. I look forward to continuing to work with you to bring more high-quality affordable housing to New Yorkers and in doing, and doing so in a way that meets our shared fair housing goals. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today. And me and my team are here and look forward to your questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, and all of the members of your team who, who have been working on this hearing. I, I want to start off by saying something on the record. I want, I want HPD to be up there with DOE in terms of being a very major agency in terms of budget and, and capacity to just build, 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 and do more for New Yorkers. I just want to say that at the, at the onset, the work that you do is, is so important. So to, to kick us off with, with questions. When looking at the fiscal 2024 preliminary budget, funding for HPD is 62 million dollars less than in fiscal 2023 at adoption. Meanwhile, the preliminary mayor's management report shows decreased performance on certain indicators relating to inspections, enforcement, and affordable housing preservation and construction. So very, very broad question. Is this budget that has you at twenty, at 62 million dollars less, is it sufficient to meet not only the city's deep affordable housing crisis, but also the targets that you yourself at HPD are laying out in the PMMR? How is this decrease rationalized?
So, um, a, as you know, we are a, an important agency, as you suggest, and one of the larger agencies. We have suffered significant losses of staff over the last several years, just like everyone else across the city and across the economy, even in the private sector. We can always do more with more and will continue to work with our partners at the Office of Management and Budget to achieve the staffing levels, maintain the staffing levels that are required to do our job. The agency is delivering on every, by, on every important measure. If you look at the inspections, if you look at the, uh, the development numbers of new construction for, of, of new housing units, in fact, you know, we had 10,000 new units of, of housing just this past year, the second highest on record. I think where you saw some of the, um, falloff in product, in, in, in housing unit numbers was in preservation work. But we will continue to do everything that is necessary in partnership with the Office of Management and Budget to get the resources necessary to, to deliver affordable housing for New Yorkers. Deputy Commissioner.
Thank you, council member, for that question. Just also want to add to that, that with our budget, some of the funds you see in the current year are one-time funding from federal government. And also there are some funds there that usually will roll over into the next fiscal year. That hasn't happened yet. So that's why you will see, it appears as though there is some drop in our overall budget. But, and we also have some grant funds that we get directly from the federal government that we schedule as needed. And so at this point, we haven't scheduled those funds yet. So as we schedule those funds in the, in the coming year, you will see our budget go up. So as we schedule those funds in the coming year, you will see our budget go up.
Understood. Thank you for that. So zooming in here, so good. It's a positive that we've reached a record number of new construction units in the last year, to 10,000 units. But help us understand the dip in preservation. Why are we seeing that dip? And specifically, you know, to couch it in what I said in my opening remarks, this administration decreased its planned number of affordable housing starts from 25,000 to 18,000. So, put the work that is happening at HPD with the 10,000 new construction in context of a lower goal and decreased preservation.
So, our target is 18,000 units of housing, both in new construction and preservation. We do expect that there will be a rebound of preservation work. We need tools to achieve that rebound. We're building up the staff in the preservation unit. As you heard from the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, as we fill those positions, the positions we have, more resources will come to the agency. The dip in the preservation's number will turn around as we build up that unit, as we secure the tools that we need to deliver on preservation. One of the biggest problems that we face right now in the city in terms of the tools that we use is we've lost J-51. J-51 was an important tool for owners and landlords to deliver on good, sound, affordable housing, keep it affordable. So we're in front of the state legislature. We're partnering with the governor. We hope that we'll get your support on that legislative initiative. We've seen a number of hires come in, in the preservation unit. It's trending in the right direction, so we're very confident that we will meet our objectives this year. We are on pace to meet and possibly exceed the 18,000 units of housing this year.
That's helpful. And I know that it's not unusual for this activity to pick up at the end of the year.
Closing season is coming, yes.
Right. What does HPD, what does the administration believe should replace J-51?
There should be a better tool that addresses the costs of the work, the eligible items, the items that are eligible for owners to use for the improvements work that needs to be done. We've taken the position that owners should not pass on the increases to tenants that are represented in the costs to renovations. I probably should lean on one of my experts to talk about this a little bit.
I can start, and then, of course, I can be joined by Deputy Commissioner McLaughlin. Especially, just taking a step back, in addition to the number of things that came out of COVID, so restructuring agency, the build backup that everyone is experiencing coming back from, that was not something that was immune to our building stock as well. The building stock, as we're seeing now, does need investment. We believe that we can structure an investment with the state's help that preserves people and focuses on keeping people in existing homes. In addition to what we want to put forward in new construction, we want to make sure that we have a strong tool that helps with existing homes. So as the Commissioner laid out, there are a number of different structural changes that also includes allowing for streamlining so that the application process is something that owners can work with and is useful and applies in a way where more buildings can take advantage of it.
Sorry, before your answer, let me just swear you in. Can you raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the committee and respond honestly to committee member questions?
Yes. Thank you. You'll hear from all of us on J-51 today. So to give a little more granular detail on the proposal that's in front of the state at the moment, it's a revamp of the previous J-51 program, but a more targeted version of the program. So it will be available to rental buildings that provide at least 50% of their units affordable at 80% AMI or below. Those units will have to be rent-stabilized, and those will be rent-stabilized in perpetuity. And also for condos or co-ops, where the average assessed value in the building or in each of the units is $45,000 per unit. So the idea here is to really target the benefit towards the buildings that we think need it the most. This tool has not been available for some time, and we know the period of time that we've come out of. There's been a lot of deferred maintenance in a lot of these buildings, and we want to make sure there's a robust tool for them to be able to access and do the rehab work that they need. So we are creating an abatement program here, where they'll receive up to 70% of the cost of doing that work. And as the Commissioner said, the goal is to really update the cost of the program or the costs that we would allow to reflect true costs of doing the work today. And so we really want to incentivize folks to do that work and to target the benefit.
And since it sunset last June, and even before it sunset, owners were pretty much not using the program anymore because it was dated and irrelevant related to costs.
Thank you. And thinking about Local Law 97 compliance and how much of a challenge that can represent for some buildings, especially co-ops and condos, as you just mentioned, what if any nexus is there between this revamped proposed J-51 and complying with Local Law 97?
Sure, I'm happy to take that. So one of the great things about the updated program is that we've updated a lot of the eligible cost items to include, you know, greener, more sustainable items, particularly for buildings that are mostly rent-stabilized that would comply with Article 321 of Local Law 97. They would have the prescriptive measures that are in there to be able to address the work that they need to complete to comply. I will say it's not necessarily designed to be the full compliance measure for all buildings for Local Law 97, but we'll certainly have updated tools for them to get where they hopefully need to go.
I would just add, in addition to that, we have our standard term sheets, some of which are targeted on sustainability. And if you look at our new Design Guidelines, you see that we are trying to factor in those improvements into the capital costs that we provide with our term sheets.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And do you have an estimate of the value of the proposed benefit?
We don't at the moment, because it's dependent upon that abatement and sort of updating those costs. We hope to do that actually with you all through a public process later, once the state sort of approves the authorization of the program.
I will take you up on that. Okay. Thank you. And I'm going to just ask one more question before I turn it over to my colleagues with questions. And this one is really personal to me, and I'm looking at you, Commissioner, because you are my predecessor. A couple of years ago, you represented District 14, a previous version of District 14. And you know how economically depressed our community is and how painful it is when you go back to the community and they ask you, "What is there for me? What are you doing that's for me?" "Oh, you're the Chair of Housing. You're doing housing work. What are you doing for me?" And the answer is not robust, right? So the question here is, on the very low-income unit completions, they were very, very low in 2023, or they have been so far. There were about 500 completions in the first half of the year, but in fiscal 2022, there were over 7,000 completions for the entire year. If these trends continue, HPD will only produce about a seventh, seventh of the very low-income units this year that it did last year. So what exactly is happening here with the very low-income unit completions? And what is needed to meet HPD's reduced production targets?
Thank you, Councilmember. And yeah, let me first say that just as for you, this is very personal to me. Having parents that came from Puerto Rico in the 1950s with zero money and having to live in a sub-basement in Williamsburg on South Second Street, and then in the Lower East Side, and, you know, ultimately getting to an affordable FHA mortgage-supported home in the North Bronx for $28,000 at the time. I don't know what that's today, in today's dollars, but it's pretty reasonable. But being able to capture the American dream is what we want to do for all these families. And in your case, and in the case of many council members across the city, you represent people that are just arriving here, that have been at the low end of the spectrum or that have been at the low end of the income spectrum for generations, and we need to capture them. And while we celebrate the production of our affordable housing, reaching 95% of the housing, reaching families making below 80% of AMI, and a significant portion, like a third, below 30% of AMI, of very low income, we still have to do more, and we recognize that. And so we're working on a multi-pronged strategy that includes continuing what we do in neighborhoods, working very specifically on neighborhood-specific plans, and revamping our term sheets to include deeper affordability everywhere we can. I remember my experience as councilmember there in the 14th District, where we worked to create affordable housing for very poor families, but we also created homeownership opportunities for low-income families and in some cases, very low-income families. So we're employing every tool that we possibly can. I'd like the Deputy Commissioner for Development, Kimberly Darga. If she, I guess we have to do another swearing-in. We should do a mass swearing-in here.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's my apologies. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
So I know you also asked specifically about completions. The pandemic had a really significant impact on construction activity for a few years. There were complete halts and then need-to-remobilize projects. So we did see a dip in completions in the later years of the pandemic. Most of the completions we see tend to be in the spring and summer, so we are expecting to get back up to a more normal level this year.
And that will be across very, very low-income?
It's pretty much across the board for construction projects. Preservation was, new construction, there was some slowdown in the first year of the pandemic, and then it ramped back up. But certainly, there were delays in those projects. And preservation projects, where we were doing work in occupied buildings, there were much longer delays because residents were really hesitant to have people in their homes. Understandably so.
Thank you. That makes sense.
And let me just reiterate, because I think I misspoke. It's almost two-thirds of the new construction is affordable to extremely low-income and very low-income families in our portfolio. That doesn't keep us, or should not keep us, from focusing on deeper affordability, and that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Right, because even ELI is, like, the folks in D-14 that are okay. Right, we have 10% of AMI-15, right? Everything at the lowest ends. So thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I want to turn it over to my colleagues who may have some questions before I take it back.
Lincoln thinks he's a good colleague. Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the work that you do, and certainly, Ahmed Tijani. One question I have, just the other day when we were at DSS listening, I'm just confused, because they too now have a, I think it's a new unit on tenant protection. And then the Commission on Human Rights, they have units on tenant protection, just in terms of discrimination. Does that, and then DOB has a tenant unit, and then you have a tenant unit. Does everybody coordinate? Because just from the outside here, it's a little, I just call Sarah. That's what I do. But I didn't know.
That's a good question, Councilmember. We do coordinate quite a bit. We work in tandem with those agencies. We, in many cases, play a supporting role. But we also have a suite of tenant protection programs, the Anti-Harassment Unit. Part of our work in this, and this important investment we've made, and the mayor has committed to, in the Partners in Preservation, is to take a pilot that we've tested that works, where we partner with local nonprofit organizations to organize tenants to allow them to understand their rights, their legal protections, to provide, you know, legal services to them, to provide housing counseling. But that's done in tandem with DOB, with the City Human Rights Commission, and other partners.
Because DSS popped up.
You want to add a little bit to this?
I'm sorry. It just seemed to me like it was over, just complicated. Go ahead.
As the Commissioner laid out, there's a lot of coordination going on. In addition, the legislative pieces where certain protections happen fall under different codes. So with the Department of Buildings, the Office of Tenant Advocate in that agency focuses on construction as harassment, tenant harassment and tenant protections as it relates to requirements under the Building Code, whereas HPD focuses on the Housing Maintenance Code. And since in many buildings, you'll see that there could be issues on one side that could contribute and point in the direction of the other, and vice versa. Both Deputy Commissioners Santiago and various officials of the DOB side are either talking monthly or meeting regularly in different working groups to think about how we can align those services. And then on the DSS and CCHR side, we're looking on issues that fall into the Human Rights Code. In particular, we've pointed out today the focus on source of income discrimination. And that's why we're so glad to have this 3.1 million to focus on testing and protecting tenants with vouchers.
Okay. I'm just saying, I think DSS is also doing source of income, and I was just wondering why they got in the game too.
We are.
Source of income. DSS is doing that also.
CCHR, with state agencies. We're all coordinated to maximize the resources we have.
All right. I'm just letting you, from the outside perspective, it's confusing. So I hope that it is coordinated.
It is a multi-agency coordination that happens. And there's a lot of information sharing so that, for instance, we step in and are able to issue violations, take landlords to court. You know, we have the Housing Litigation Unit that kicks into gear.
I know, Marty.
And then the source of income, you know, discrimination boost that we just got is going to allow us to be more effective.
Okay. I'm not disagreeing with it, just from the outside. Somebody does constituent work, it's confusing, right? And so you should know that, and hopefully you coordinated this. So I'm not going to belabor the point, but I don't think it's as coordinated out here as you think it is, so hopefully you will work at it. Also, I call, I'm on the TIL program. So I just wanted to know, at this point, how many of these properties are in TIL? How many units? And of course, some people in Manhattan do not like ANCP. We want HCFCs. So I wanted to know just the update on TIL and where we are just generally in terms of the funding.
Okay.
It's kind of a challenge, to put it mildly.
As you know, yeah, this has been a challenge for.
Since Philip St. George started it. Thank you.
Yes.
And I was in the room.
It's been a long time.
Yes.
You know, I think everybody should know that it is our most costly program that we subsidize. We're committed to making cooperative ownership a reality for the residents of these buildings. Some of those are much harder than others. ANCP has over $300 million in the next five-year cycle of fiscal years. That's our capital commitment plan. And close to $650 million over the 10-year. And close to six hundred and fifty million dollars over the ten-year investment that we're making in housing. We have many successes so far, believe it or not. It, you know, we often hear a lot of the bad news, but we've financed over fifty buildings with nearly seven hundred units that have converted to.
That's in the last year?
Successful co-ops.
How many in the last, like, what's updated statistics? That's what I'm looking for.
So you're looking for?
What, what, maybe what you did in the last year, and then what do you project for the future in terms of numbers? Of, not just cost, but.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what's, yeah, I'll tell you what's remaining to do.
Yeah.
There are still seventy-eight buil-, buildings.
TIL?
In TIL.
Okay.
Which represent over thirteen hundred units.
Okay.
So we're, we're fully committed to getting each and every one of those across the finish line. One of our challenges, Councilmember, is convincing tenants who either still live in these buildings, or who lived in them and hope to return to them.
Yes, I'm familiar with every single one of those tenants.
To convince them to, 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 and have them understand that they could be very successful. And I've been, you know, I've been, I've visited some of the success stories. They're beautiful buildings. When they're renovated, the owners are happy. It's a great deal for New Yorkers, twenty-five hundred dollars for a brand-new apartment in a stable building. But we've got, it's an expensive program, so we've got to, we've got to work some kinks out.
Okay. But you got, you also have to, you're going to have trouble with some of the Manhattan folks, just so you know.
Yeah, we kind of know about that.
Don't want to be ANCP, they want to be HFC. So I hope it works.
Yeah, and there's, you know, look, we, folks have options. Ultimately, it's, you know, it's their choice, but we want to get them across the finish line successfully in safe, high-quality housing.
All right. We can have a debate. Can I go to the second round?
Yes. Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember. We'll circle right back. Councilmember Barron?
I want to really get to the crux of affordability. Affordability, everybody uses the term loosely, and it can be defined many different ways. Affordable to who? And affordable for who? What is the AMI? See now, if you use the metropolitan area AMI, and they bring in, you know, Suffolk County and all of that, that's one number for those three and four families. And then if you use the five boroughs, the New York City AMI for three families and for four families, if you could just give me some clarity on that, then I have a few other questions.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, this is an ongoing challenge. I think municipalities across the country are, are dealing with this. A number of legislators, both at the municipal level and at the state level, and some of our congressional representatives are toiling with this. How we define the SMSAs, the statistical metropolitan areas. But the, what we have today, the 2022, which is the latest AMIs. So let's take a family of, a family size.
Just because in terms of my time, if you could just do three and four for metropolitan, and three and four for five boroughs.
So, so.
If the five boroughs don't exist.
They don't exist.
Okay. So let's do the metropolitan.
Yeah, which is precisely the point of your challenge, right, of our challenge. A three, a three-member household that's thirty percent AMI.
No, no, just do the, the hundred percent, what is the hundred percent AMI?
A hundred percent is a hundred and twenty thousand.
Right. A hundred and twenty thousand.
And for a family of four, a hundred and thirty-three and four.
Now, I just want to stop there.
Yep.
That's where the problem lies.
Yes.
Because when you say eighty percent of that is affordable, and that's not in counting, counting inflationary AMI, you know, when it's going to rise, you know, in five, two, three years, five years, it's going to rise. So today, eighty percent of the AMI is what? About what? You mathematicians?
Oh, here we go. I can give it to you right here. It's ninety-six thousand.
Right, ninety-six thousand.
For a family of three, and a hundred and six for a family of four.
Right. So that's eighty percent of the AMI that HUD is saying is affordable for us. You know my neighborhood AMI? And I know you know the Bronx.
Yes.
AMI, so my thirty-six thousand dollars for a family of three is my AMI. So if a developer comes in and says, "We're building affordable housing, and eighty percent of it is going to be for those making eighty percent and below," and no developer is going to go below unless you have it in, in it. You say a percentage has to be at thirty and forty and all of that. So my concern is, is how we defining this AMI, and we're not taking into consideration the inflationary AMI. When I came into office, the hundred percent was at eighty-six thousand for family of three. And then when I would say, "Okay, eighty percent of that is sixty-four thousand." So I said, "Well, if I can get, there's some people in my neighborhood that make sixty-four thousand, so I'll do the income ban, and I'll do the, the sixty-four thousand at twenty percent, but then the other eighty percent has to be at thirty and forty percent of the AMI." That's affordable. So we've had a hundred percent affordability in East New York, that's why we're not gentrified like some of these other neighborhoods. No brags, just facts. But now, when I'm signing on to stuff, and even when I get it at thirty percent of the AMI, do thirty percent of the AMI for me, please?
Thirty-six for a family of three, forty for a family of four.
Right. See, so I gotta do eighty percent at thirty percent of the AMI for it to be affordable to the income ban of my beloved East New York.
You know, the, the deals, the projects we've done in your district, largely, the extremely low and low.
See, I'm really talking for the others who are in trouble. In my district, honesty compels me. I love beating y'all up, but I just can't, because it's been, it's been good in my district. But for the city, because what I've done is, I said, "No, I'm not just going to do eighty percent and below." We're going to say, "We get to do a percentage at thirty, a percentage at forty, a percentage at fifty." And so I've had projects that have come into, we have all one hundred percent affordable projects.
Yes.
And it's, and can I just finish that? And the reason, the reason being is because we break it down like that. And to be honest with you, I wasn't good for the middle class in my neighborhood, because when I first started, everything was at thirty and forty percent. So someone making sixty thousand dollars or eighty thousand dollars a household income is not a lot of money at all. So, but I was saying, if you make more than fifty thousand, you're not getting into these units. Because I was just focusing on the extremely poor. So I then changed and said, "Okay, let me do at least the income ban, at least twenty percent should be at eighty percent of the AMI, and then look at the rest for the real thing." So we got to get to a point where we can say, "Let's do the income ban of a neighborhood." And then get in all of those pieces so that that's true affordability. And then, I don't know how we do this, maybe I'll work on some legislation. And how do we keep it at that, even if it takes ten years to build a project? Because see, if I get thirty, forty percent of the AMI right now, it's thirty-six percent, that's, that's my AMI. And then they build it ten years later, thirty percent of the AMI is going to be eighty thousand dollars. Because the inflationary rate of the AMI, so what was originally affordable on paper, after it gets built, it's no longer affordable. Yes, ma'am.
You are absolutely covering the most complicated issue that we are grappling with. We, costs have gone up across the board for residents, they've gone up for building owners. Operating costs now are probably above nine thousand dollars per residential unit to operate a building. And so in order for us to meet the needs of very low-income, extremely low-income New Yorkers, we need to create some mix within the housing projects that we finance.
Now, let me address that.
Yes.
Because that's another thing they come with, but I was ready for that one too. See, so then they'll say, "Okay, Charles, if you want, you know, thirty, forty percent at thirty percent, then we're going to have to go up with another twenty, thirty, forty percent at ninety percent of the AMI, just to meet it." But that's not the only alternative, is to talk to your mayor, your buddy, and put more in for subsidies. See, if, if more subsidy money comes in out of this ninety-three billion dollar, you know, five-year capital plan for the city, and a hundred and fifty-nine billion dollar, ten-year capital plan. And I hate to get more subsidies for the developers, but, but if they were not-for-profit developers, would be better as well. And community land trust as developers as well. But if this state and this city that has that kind of subsidies, and they subsidize those units, then we don't have to, we can be one hundred percent truly authentically affordable.
You know, I, I want to go back to, if I may, Madam Chair, just for a second, Councilmember.
I'm sorry, if I could just finish up in a little bit.
We're all grappling, we're all grappling with this issue. The council member's in trouble with the chair right now, right?
You see me begging over here.
I remember those days.
I don't, I don't mess with my chair, now. That's my boss. I don't mess with her. I'll mess with Charles before I'll mess with her.
But, but I think this is where we could use your partnership. Because frankly, one of the biggest tools available to us is tax credits, as you know, right? Low-income housing tax credits to, to be able to layer the kind of financing, the subsidy required to deepen affordability. Just because of the cost of things. So to get to the price point for the people who live in our districts, in the neighborhoods that you all represent, we're going to need to have the federal government increase the availability of tax credits, and that, and that means.
But excuse me for getting, that's one way.
Yeah.
The other way is this, the other way is this city, this mayor, your buddy, this mayor that has that big capital budget, and if you gave him a figure what the subsidies would be needed from the city and the bonds, you know, and the capital. You know, you got the subsidies, you got the bonds, you got capital. There's a lot of ways to get to affordability without putting, pitting us against each other.
Multi-layered, for sure.
It is. And I know it can be done. If I were mayor, if y'all would vote for me for ma-, no, I'm just kidding, I'm not running. But all he has to do, it's really not complicated, it's really not complicated. The money is there. We got eight-point-three billion, anyway, the money is there. So if we could fight for that, then we can have a hundred percent affordability across the board, especially since by the time we get the project built, you know, it's going to go even higher. I'll pass on that, and just one last thing, the community land trust. You know, I have never been afraid of anybody in all my life, except for this chair here. But the community land trust, we used to give these rich, white, male developers a dollar for the land. Y'all remember them days? And some of that may still happen for all I know. Not quite, but they still selling it dirt cheap. They're not paying what they should be paying for the land. Give it to the community land trust. We got to get our community land trust to own land and build projects on those lands and get the subsidies that these rich guys get. These rich guys, I used to always tell them when they come in, or we can't afford to do this, I say, "Go get your welfare." He said, "Welfare?" I said, "Yeah, when we get free money from the government, it's welfare, and when you get it free, it's subsidies. How come y'all have a cute term? Either we all on subsidies, or we all on welfare." But I think subsidies is an answer, and we got to get more to community land trust. Of the five hundred thousand units, how much, what percentage is set aside for the homeless?
So let, you know, Madam Chair, do we have time to respond? Because we're going to, you know, we're, look, we're, we're committed to working with community land trusts. We're actively working in certain parts of the city, and Ahmed can talk to that, Mr. Tijani can talk to that. One of the things we need from you, we need your help. Our lone authority to do deals with community land trusts or a single-family homeowner, a one-to-four-family homeowner, is very limited. We want to, we want to do more down payment assistance, we want to do more development with community land trusts. But we're limited by, by, by the loan authorities that we now have. We have legislation that will, we're going to aggressively push post-April one, the, you know, state budget. Right now, they're a little bit distracted with other things, but we're going to come back to them. But we can use your help, but if you can share a little bit about our community land trust work, Mr. Tijani?
One, one minute, please.
In a minute.
In one minute.
The very quick version is at least over twelve hundred units of planning already in, in motion. We've supported CLTs throughout the city. Cooper Square started new CLTs that have emerged, like East Harlem. We've worked on, with CLTs, not only to develop community-based planning, but also sustainable community-based planning with a set of projects with habitat called the Net Zero Project, which I'd love to talk to you about.
Okay.
Thirteen vacant dilapidated nitro properties into sixteen new home ownership opportunities with the CLT. In 2021, we issued a report, issued a request that will establish a new CLT in Edgere that will take and reinvest in vacant land as well as.
And I appreciate the work y'all doing with the East New York Community Land Trust and Jewel Street Project after sixty years of neglect.
Yep.
Doing some great work together there.
Both the housing plan and the staff at HPD have dedicated resources to put CLTs as a priority in this administration. We're forward to working to continue that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. See, you got to, you got to respect the OG council members, though.
That was good.
Thank you, thank you so much. And, and just to, you know, just to agree with Councilmember Barron, right? Yes, we need to get, you know, Washington DC to give us, give us more flexibility in how we use Lytech and, and allow us to finance, you know, deeper affordability levels and, and all of that. And yes, we need affordability plus, I will, you know, introduce Serezow at some point, if, if I'm first in time and all of that in the council. But the, a big part of the reason why I and members of this council, last go-around, this go-around, and the advocacy community are asking for the mayoral commitment of four billion dollars for affordable housing to materialize is so that we can go deeper on affordability. It's, it's so that we can, we can subsidize more of the units that we, we know that we need for, for our lowest-income New Yorkers. So we're going to, we're going to continue to, to drive that point, even as we, we agree on other points and, and join in advocacy efforts. I am going, is it okay, you know? I'm like, I, I want to, I want to, I don't want to lose any of my colleagues' questions because of schedules, but I, I just wanted to quickly touch on staffing and HPD staffing crisis, right? The vacancy rate is still fourteen-point-eight percent. HPD has met only thirty-three percent of your critical indicators. You are doing hiring fairs, you are, there have been some, some steps that have been taken to make, to, to make the hiring process easier and, and attract more talent for longer terms. But what about civil service reforms? Because I understand that, you know, some of, some of the barriers that you're facing are enshrined in New York City's civil service law. It's, city, civil service law is required by the state constitution, but it, it is governed within the city. So what are we doing to, I, I just find it ridiculous that we only offer an exam for, let's say, the Housing Development Specialist Exam was last offered in November 2020. It's an exam. We have computers now. There's this whole thing called the internet. Why can we only offer an exam three years ago for a title that we need at HPD today and we're facing barriers to, to hiring for?
So, yeah, these, these are ongoing challenges. As you suggested, the rules and regulations around salary standards, tests, the, the cycle of the tests, what pool of potential candidates we can draw from, the salaries we can offer them, all of these things are controlled by the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, which is our sister agency. We also have the civil service law, which is a state law. We're, we're doing everything in our power to communicate what we need, the resources that we need at any given time. Right now, our focus is to backfill hundreds of vacancies. And in my prepared testimony, I talked about the hundreds of people that we've hired recently and just in. If we keep pace now with what we've done in the first two and a half months of the year, we're going to have a pretty darn good year. And I think the agreement that was hatched with DC-37 is going to be helpful. And I think the agreement that was hatched with DC 37 is going to be helpful for us, certainly for morale. We're going to continue to have these hiring fairs. But the challenges, these are not new challenges. I would love if my former commissioner, I mean, the Commissioner of DCAST was sitting right next to me so we could tag team on this, but our able first deputy can probably address some of this.
I just want, the "we" in this is us and DCAST. So Commissioner Pinoc and her staff has been actively working with us to look at titles, to look at engagement in the field, to look at publicizing the test that exists, matching those tests to possible candidates, working with us to understand how we can continue to recruit and bring more people in. You know, we, there's, even with the title that you mentioned now, we've been working to figure out how to get more people to take the test and be able to pull from that list and know how to fill our positions. They've been a great partner, and we definitely have appreciated it.
And in fact, you know, I do have to tip my hat to Commissioner Pinoc for working so closely and aggressively with us. When I first walked in a year, a year and change ago, we had a much more severe shortage of housing inspectors, and we needed help hiring them. We've made some adjustments to the numbers, and we've, we've worked, she worked very creatively with us to get a couple of classes, right, Anne Marie, a couple of classes in, and now you see the numbers that I shared at the start of the testimony, which is pretty amazing. We're adding 58 new people, 44 new people very soon, two additional classes, and in no small part because of the partnership with DCAST. So I think, you know, the agency is working hard to be creative and think outside the box.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I know that one of the changes that has been made is not always requiring the agency to hire at the bottom of the pay scale for a position, and that makes a difference. But what about the, some of the other challenges that is making HPD and city agencies at large not as competitive as the private sector, like the option to work remotely or to have bonuses or, you know, just some of these other ideas that you keep hearing about? What progress is being made there?
Well, you know, I referenced the deal with DC 37, which is going to allow us to pilot remote work beginning in July?
June.
June, beginning in June, thank you. So we're testing the waters on this, and so, you know, I believe it's going to move in the right direction.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, but test, we just had three years of testing the waters on remote work. Like, what exactly are we hoping to learn?
Well, there's a task force that's looking at it, but I think there's some issues that are pretty challenged or that are clear, right? And the mayor mentioned this in his early remarks on this, which was, you know, how do you treat, and this is the discussion that's happening with DC 37 and some others, how do you treat a person who does not have the option to work remotely? A housing inspector is out there burning shoe leather every day. They did it through the entire global pandemic. They never stopped. They didn't have the option to sit at home in front of a computer and process information and make phone calls and, you know, operating that. So we, it's a challenge. We want to walk into it very responsibly.
Thank you. That makes sense, and it's something that we're also thinking about at this side in the council. Thank you so much. I want to turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Lincoln Ressler.
Thank you so much, Chair Sanchez. We are incredibly fortunate to have you in this role, and it's good to see you, Commissioner. I want to express my condolences to you because I think almost everyone on this day has had to either work with or overseen Ahmed Tagani in our previous professional jobs and...
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that.
So I just, I mean those condolences as sincerely as I possibly can.
Thank you.
I love you. I do. So I do want to just start by continuing on the thread that Chair Sanchez was pulling on vacancies. You know, I talk to affordable housing advocates all across the city every day, every week, who are doing everything they can to try to protect and preserve and build more affordable housing, and the number one issue they say to me every time is staff up HPD, that HPD doesn't have enough people. That is our biggest impediment to building, protecting, and preserving more affordable housing. And so I just have to say plainly how angry I am that we've seen 100-odd positions eliminated at HPD. We should not be shrinking the HPD workforce. We need the HPD workforce to address the affordability crisis. I have a great deal of confidence in Commissioner, in Deputy Commissioner Dargis' team and Deputy Commissioner Santiago's teams in the work that they do, but if they don't have staff, then they can't achieve their goals. They can't achieve the goals we need you to achieve. And so I just would like to pin you down a little bit. I believe we're at about 400 vacancies, 15% as vacancy rate, as Chair Sanchez noted. How many new folks have you hired so far this year? Is that a net increase in the total staff count, headcount at HPD?
Yeah, there was a net increase, and that's a very good sign. We have lots of candidates in the pipeline, and you heard the OMB director talk about the vacancies and the need to backfill, which we're committed to doing. And we work very closely with OMB. Our goal is to backfill the positions that became vacant, like in so many other places during COVID that affected every agency, every business, et cetera. And as we go through this recovery, and I said it last year, my number one goal is to rebuild the agency to ensure that we can deliver on the mission. But Deputy Commissioner Caphart could probably talk a little bit about...
Yeah, and thank you, Councilmember, and just want to, thank you, sir. And just want to add to that, that as far as the vacancy reduction you saw with the PEG that we had, 34 of the positions are being restored by OMB right now, so we are excited about that, and as the...
So that means only 67 were cut?
And then we also got more new positions funded, yeah. And we also got no more new positions funded with this budget for different programs. So the goal is to, again, work hard to fill out vacancies. We're out there, as you mentioned, as the Commissioner has shared, this is a priority for us. We want to make sure that we are fully staffed. We are working with our partners at OMB.
You have the numbers on how many additional hires were made over the first two months?
Yeah, the first two months, yeah, we brought in 138 new employees. We saw about seven-one leaves, so a net gain of 67. And over the last couple of years, we've been seeing net losses, so that's a good sign for us. And with the DC 37 deal, that tentative deal that has been working with DC 37, and all the different guidelines we're getting and updates we're getting from OMB, we are very excited about that and hoping that...
If you were to maintain this pace in about a year's time, you would fill the vacancies that you're facing as an agency, we just need to speed it up. And it just has to be the top priority to be able to achieve all of the other goals because we know hasn't, you know, according to PMMR, housing starts were down 7%. Total housing completions were 62% lower than the same time last year. 29% fewer Section 8 vouchers were issued. All of the key indicators that we all want to achieve are moving in the wrong direction, primarily as a result of low staffing. But the area I'd like to just dig in on most that's of greatest concern to me is the reduction in the number of units for housing that's intended for formerly homeless individuals and supportive housing, which is overall, I believe, we saw a year-over-year increase of 27% for all homeless households and 50% among supportive housing starts. And I'm very, you know, this is to me where we need to be most prioritizing our attention on generating more supportive housing and more housing for formerly homeless individuals. Are you, what are the expectations for the full fiscal year in terms of achieving the goals relative to where we were last year? Are we expecting to continue to be at a significant deficit from the previous year?
Let me, let me have Kim Dargar, Deputy Commissioner of Development, address that.
It's good to see you, Deputy Commissioner Dargar.
Nice to see you again. So actually, last year was actually an amazing year for us in terms of financing new supportive housing. As the Commissioner mentioned, our overall production was down, but in terms of new affordable housing and particularly supportive housing, the production was one of the highest years ever. And we are very committed to that work. As part of the housing blueprint, we committed to accelerating supportive housing production in the city to meet the New York 1515 goals by 2020, so two years earlier, by 2028. We feel we are absolutely on track to meet that goal. And we're also looking at ways that we can integrate supportive housing within other projects we finance, not just in our supportive housing loan program, how we can do that in a more robust manner. And almost every single project we finance, the exception being homeownership projects, we have a homeless requirement that we house formerly homeless households. So we are extremely committed to that work, and we are hoping that as part of the rebuilding, we will be able to gradually ramp up our production work overall.
Every year needs to be a banner year, and the achievements of last year need to be met this year and exceeded. Just a final comment in closing, because I know I've gone over time, just on two critical Mitchell Lama projects in District 33. I think we're meeting next week about Bedford Gardens, where the landlord has proposed 80% rent increases on very low-income tenants. I hope that we can work together to ensure long-term affordability at Bedford Gardens for the 600-odd units there and prevent extreme and egregious rent increases that would cause significant new homelessness in our community. And then secondly, HPD has been working on Article 2 to 11 conversion at Camden Towers. I have some concerns about it and want to make sure that our concerns are incorporated into the process. We know you've been working closely with residents there for years, and I think it's been a good process, but it's really important that our office be a partner in achieving a goal that's ultimately going to come to the council for approval. So I just hope that you and your team will be open to our input as we move forward on this process.
Thank you, Councilmember. We look forward to the upcoming meeting next Friday about the Mitchell Lamas in your district. And I'll take the opportunity now, Chairwoman, to point out that Mitchell Lamas have been so important to providing affordable housing to working families, to working-class people, to low-income New Yorkers, to seniors, a lot of seniors. Families have grown old in Mitchell Lama. In affordable housing in many neighborhoods across the city, we have 93 Mitchell Lama housing developments, most of them co-ops. But we have this persistent and endemic problem that we're going to have to address, and it's larger than the budget discussion. And it has to do with those rent increases, right? They're self-driven rent increases because the onus is on the development and the board to determine when they're going to ask for a rent increase. We process the rent increase. We work with them on the math, but we see the costs going up and rent increases being delayed for five, 10, 12 years, and all of a sudden, you get this crisis where you can't meet your mortgage, you can't meet your operating costs, your insurance costs have gone up. So we need to peg the rent increases to something, right? Something regular. And we look forward to having that discussion with you all, maybe at a different hearing, a dedicated discussion about Mitchell Lama.
Just, Councilmember, you had mentioned a stat about vouchers before, and so the stat... The stat about vouchers specifically, it sounds like it's a reduction based on us not issuing vouchers more frequently. It's in fact because federal vouchers have a cap, and we had been hovering around 96%, 97% of utilization. We have now gotten to the point where we've effectively used almost 100% of our utilization. We're happy to have done that. That means more families have vouchers on homes, but we do run up against a federal cap, which we are advocating, and we hope to have you as partners advocating to see our PHA receive more federal housing vouchers from the federal government.
Thank you for that clarification, and thank you for your service to our city, Mr. Tagani.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Councilmember Brewer, did you have a follow-up?
I just want to ask, just vouchers in general, and I've never, you know, obviously we have Section 8, NYCHA has some, you have some, how does that break down? Because for the public to understand now, who's, how much is involved? Like, is it a, something that you can assign funding to? Obviously, we'd love more in Congress, that's a different issue. And then there are also, I think there are some vouchers that some developers have that they hold on to. I don't know if that's true, but I just want to understand particularly about the vouchers.
So I'll...
And what's the assignment of money to them?
Yeah, I mean, from a very high level, and I'll have Ahmed address the vouchers. He's Mr. Vouchers at HPD. But just to say, it's a hugely important tool for us.
Yes, it is.
I think 43, 44,000 households, 80-some-odd thousand New Yorkers benefit from this. It's not enough. If we hit 100% utilization, we obviously need more. So I just want to emphasize the need for our partnership, right, to be strategic between this city agency and this council and this committee to go to the federal government, knock on their door. We can, you know, together do that, and you can talk a little bit about...
We have the Section 8, then we have the PEPs, and we have the emergence, go ahead.
Yep.
There's so many different kinds of vouchers.
We do.
So in New York City, we have a unique situation where we have two public housing authorities that are authorized to issue out housing choice vouchers among other voucher programs, depending on how that rental administration system is set up. I don't want to speak too much for NYCHA's program. NYCHA is the largest in the country. They think they have roughly somewhere between 88,000 and 90,000 Section 8 families, but I would again verify with them, we're about the fifth-largest in the country, HPD. Our voucher program is mainly dedicated toward supporting the development program so we can make sure that we get to those extra-low and very low-income families. Our voucher program is about 43,000 of all our different voucher types, which includes federal and other income sources, about 37, the exact number, sorry, is a little bit over 37,000 are federal housing choice vouchers. Those are Section 8. When we refer, we house about 84,000 New Yorkers. When you break down those stats, even more, the average tenant income in our subsidized household for us is about 17,000. 88% are extremely low-income, 52.5% are minority, 41% are elderly, so we're doing a lot to serve that population, and 48% have a diagnosed disability. So our vouchers are truly going to serve the most vulnerable out there. So for us, we work together. NYCHA has more of a general tenant-based focus. HPD's focus is on the development pipeline. We, there's also state vouchers, so the Housing Community Renewal has their voucher program. The coordination is, tenants have the ability to reach out and find availability in different ways from these different sources. The other, I think when you were talking about sort of owner, ownership of voucher, not only do we have tenant-based voucher, but we also have project-based vouchers. So vouchers that we use to make a particular development affordable. Once a tenant enters a project-based voucher project, if he or she would like to move, they actually are, we make sure they afford the opportunity to take a voucher and move with it, even though the voucher had started off as a project-based voucher. Then there's, of course, the HRA City FAPs, or City FAPs program that's run by HRA. Again, I would defer to them on much of their specifics, but we actually work very closely with them, especially in our placement pipeline, coordinating and making sure that there are DHS referrals that can make their way into one of our new construction or subsidized homes.
Okay. But do you hold back? Obviously, you need to make sure you have enough for upcoming development projects. So you hold back to hopefully make those numbers work?
We don't hold that back. There's a, there's a cycle, the calculation that's done, a general rate of attrition that happens every year because there are people who either leave the program or there's different, there's different versions of attrition, and we try to estimate to the best of our ability what that allocation will be and then plan a development pipeline or different allocations around it.
Okay. I wish there would be more in the borough of Manhattan, but that's another story. Now, talk about...
Yeah, I, you know, I'm, I'll get back to the exact number, but the borough of Manhattan is actually very, very well-served by our vouchers.
Don't get me started. Now, the other thing is Harborview, you know I'm going to ask about, what's going on with Harborview and my units of 100% affordable housing on a NYCHA development where everybody wants it to be built, but it hasn't been built since Christine Quinn and I signed off on it, Hudson Yards?
Harborview, you want to take back?
So I'm very familiar with the Harborview project. It's a project that sits on currently NYCHA land. We've went through community visioning processes. I know that's been a very long process that's gone through different versions of how to move forward. We hear you on the comment, and after this hearing, we'll make sure to loop back with NYCHA to decide how they would like to proceed forward with that application.
I knew the answer already, but I just would like to get this project going. If you want affordable housing, this is a hundred percent requested. Can you imagine? No complaints, nothing, just do it. And please do it with the developer that I like, Trinity. Not from New York, Trinity from Boston.
Yes, I know Trinity, yeah.
That's the only developer I like, just so you know.
The only one.
Pretty much.
All right.
For the record, Chair.
Let the record.
Let the record show.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Brewer. Okay, I have a lot of questions, so I'm hoping for just short responses. Just want to make sure to get a couple key facts on the record here. And then we'll turn it back to my colleague, Councilmember Barron. So, starting off and thinking about production and preservation pipeline. With increased inflation and interest rates, how much has the cost of new construction and preservation increased from last year for the agency financed projects? And over the past two years, what has the impact been on the preservation pipeline? Sorry, the development pipeline?
Yeah, you've hit a hot topic for us because we see the impact. But between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, end of year twenty twenty-two, about thirty percent increase in costs, which is dramatic, right? So it's like a one-third jump. And obviously, it has obvious impacts across the board. So it, you know, it clearly reduces the number of units. It challenges, you know, the affordability of these projects. So there's a, there's a lot that comes from this. Building, operating costs have increased, eight to twelve percent from twenty-one to twenty-two. Interest rates, everybody knows the interest rate environment we're in. I think two, two-and-a-half points, right, Kim? And we don't know where we're going to land. So, Kim, you want to address a little bit of how you see this from your development point of view?
And Deputy Commissioner, if you could also address in there, we used to have a target of twenty-five thousand units preserved or created. Now it's eighteen, is this part, part of it, part of the reason?
Okay, so as the Commissioner said, costs have gone up across the board. Construction, operating, interest rates. We co-finance a lot of projects, right, with banks. Long-term interest rates are certainly significantly higher. The cost impact across programs is really varied, depending on what the project is, what financing is involved. The range is really significant. We're not seeing a very clear trend right now in preservation because preservation, you know, you have everything from limited rehab to very substantial renovations, everything in between. In new construction, the subsidy cost is up about one and a half times, about fifty percent higher than it was, who knows, a year and a half ago at this point in time, before rates started to really tick up significantly. The, you know, we're certainly on track, and I think feeling good about getting to our target this year, the eighteen thousand units. So I think we have the capital resources at this point in time, and we are certainly actively monitoring this and talking to OMB about, you know, potential longer term and how to account for cost increases. So those conversations are, you know, we're continuing to monitor. And if, should there be a need for additional funding, we'll certainly be talking to them.
Thank you. How long does it take to get through HPD's new construction pipeline, measured in the average time from proposal to closing? And the same question for the preservation pipeline. How does, how long does it take from proposal to closing?
Might as well stay here for a little bit.
Yeah, stay for a while. Hit around the campfire with us.
The timeline for projects really varies really significantly. HPD finances everything from single-family homes, right, home repairs, down payment assistance, new construction, administers as-of-right financial benefits, and preservation financing. So the work that we do is extremely varied. There is no very simple answer to that question. That being said, if you're talking about like new construction more specifically, subsidized new construction, not the projects that we administer through as-of-right programs, that moves very quickly because it's an as-of-right program. There's no negotiation around budget or affordability or the rest of it, right? In the subsidized new construction space, the largest constraint is the availability of low-income housing tax credits. We talked a little bit about that earlier. That really limits the amount that we can finance in any given year because almost every single new construction project we finance has low-income housing tax credits as a major source. Because of that, the average time, probably about five years from a project coming in. Again, that's because there's a scare source that we're really allocating.
And how, in, just in that example, projects, you know, sitting on this waitlist for li-tac credits, what happens, what happens when costs escalate? Do they, do they have to redo their project financing?
I mean, usually when projects first come into it, things are not completely baked, right? Applicants come in with a project proposal. We say, here are our term sheets. This is basically if, you know, if you are going to develop something, you're going to do it within these parameters. They start working on the project on their end. And then at some point, they've got plans designed a bit more. They're starting to think about going into DOB, and it becomes a more active development project. So certainly from like project proposal, through the point in time that it's an active project, things can change pretty substantially, but that's kind of par for the course. Yeah, it's pretty normal to see changes.
So five years on the waiting list from proposal until, until a project is financed or closed, what about this year, or yes, over the last year I've seen and we've seen at the council, some creativity from HPD, using your own financing, own HPD capital to move projects along faster? How long are those projects taking to close?
So there's more flexibility to finance from a timing perspective if we are not financing something with low-income housing tax credits. But the tax credit equity is the most significant source in a development budget. And so the, you know, substituting that source in order to accelerate projects would be very, very, very costly. We did do it on a limited basis in the last year for projects with MWBE developers that have been, you know, had been applying for nine percent low-income housing tax credits and had not been awarded credits over a couple of years. And we felt we really needed to accelerate those projects. So we did on like a, use basically a more tailored basis, make a decision that we needed to invest additional resources to move those forward.
Thank you. How long is HPD's current pipeline?
And that's a really complicated question to answer. Again, we're dealing with a really range of types of projects. Talking about a home repair project, we are managing that pipeline as the, as applications come in. Talking about down payment assistance, we're managing as things come in. And we talked about new construction. You know, we have a long list of projects that applicants have said, hey, we're potentially interested. Those projects are everything from concept, very preliminary stages, to, you know, kind of barely a conversation, to, you know, projects that have design, et cetera, within them.
If we focus on new construction and preservation, could you give us an estimated number of units in the two pipelines?
The unit, again, so in new construction, we don't, you know, when you're talking about early stages, you don't necessarily have a firm unit count yet. So it's really not that you, until you get further into pre-development, that we start actually having that level of detail. So I don't have a great estimate for new construction.
Can we follow up with you for a breakdown, for estimates on those two categories?
We could give you certainly like estimated number of projects. Units is a little bit tougher, but we could see what we can do.
How long does it take for a project to be assigned a project manager after the proposal phase?
So again, we don't really assign project managers in new construction at the very preliminary stage because it's conceptual. There's not like regular and ongoing work to do at that point in time. We actually have like an intake team that like gives feedback to the development team. And in the preservation space, the project managers are generally assigned at the point of application. And in that world, there is a delay right now. We've been very transparent about that delay because of the issues the Commissioner talked earlier about. That team was certainly impacted substantially on the staffing side. And so we are rebuilding. We've basically been transparent for about a year and a half now with applicants that it is a delay to assign a project manager. And so we're hoping to eat away at those delays as we rebuild the team. But it is, it's taking a while. We're, at this point, we're trying to prioritize the projects that have the most urgent needs. So, you know, there's a lot of reasons that we do preservation work. We're helping people do repairs, right, finance repairs in their units. That's where having J-51 would be really useful right now, right? So that people don't have to, when they don't have other options, they don't have to come necessarily to me for subsidy. We also help people managing operating costs, and we are, you know, helping ensure affordability. So depending on the project, there's different urgency.
Just gonna, because it's a long list.
Sure.
So in, we're in a perfect world, and we have addressed HPD's staffing challenges. We've got project managers on board now, and we've just fixed outside of the house. How many billions of dollars would we need to move all the projects in the pipeline through to closing if we wanted to do it in one fiscal year? New construction and preservation?
If I could mobilize that way.
Just for the record, yeah, I think, I think it's impossible to do it in a fiscal year. You asked about the number of projects in the pipeline earlier. It's in the hundreds of projects. So I don't think there is a world that exists like that, that is perfect. You're talking about approximately two-hundred-and-forty projects just in our subsidized new construction programs, and in excess about four-hundred-and-fifty projects in multifamily preservation. And these are all estimates because like the Deputy Commissioner said, they're all at different stages of entry into our orbit, right? And when they do enter our orbit, we consider them. And then we look at what's real, what's not. And also for the record, just because I know that you mentioned it, I don't, I don't want to have people think that there's a low-income housing tax credit waiting list. There's, yeah, there's not a waiting list. Every project comes in with ideas about what the deliverable is in terms of housing. And then if it's a low-income housing tax credit deal, that's the most efficient way to deliver it. That's what we'll choose to do. We can get more aggressive, but not, not a fiscal year. I don't think that.
Yeah, and the point is not to try to get HPD to do it within a fiscal year. It's more so for the council, for us to be able to understand the scale of willingness that there is to build and willingness that there is to preserve, which it sounds like there's a lot more of that willingness than there is, you know, capacity, which we've been talking about, but just to put a number on it, it's helpful.
Point well taken.
Thank you, thank you so much for that. Okay, so turning to the capital commitment rate. So HPD's capital commitment rate did take a dip this year, down to sixty percent. HPD is usually very good at committing capital and spending down money that is assigned to the agency on the capital front. So what is the relationship from the, between the capital commitment rate and achieving the department's housing production goals?
I'm sorry, could you just repeat the, I didn't get the second half of the question.
Yeah, so, I mean, what I really want to know, and I kind of worded this a little funky, but the capital commitment rate is down. How is that impacting, how, what are the driving factors that are causing that capital commitment rate to be down, if we haven't already discussed them?
You want to answer that?
Kim, just stay, stay for three more.
So as I mentioned before, the pandemic really disrupted the normal operations for us. So twenty twenty-two, it was a small impact because it was the last quarter. Sorry, twenty twenty, twenty-one, certainly there was a lot of disruption from a construction perspective. You know, at that point in time, the city was trying to figure out how much money could spend, what money it could spend, and so we didn't actually close capital-y funded projects for months. That started to stabilize by twenty twenty-one, but by the end of twenty-one, we were also starting to see some challenges around staffing. We've talked about that, you know, by the end of the last administration, we were certainly in a pretty significant deficit. That has certainly, that slowed down some development projects, I may be quite honest. We have been rebuilding. We feel more optimistic about where we are today. And we think there's a lot more we can do when we can get the staffing situation stabilized.
Thank you so much. Okay, so according to the twenty twenty-two MMR, the number of affordable housing units created or preserved by HPD was forty-five percent lower in twenty twenty-two compared to the prior year, as we've discussed. And this reduction has been attributed to the staffing shortages and construction costs. Staffing situation has become so dire that the HPD office that manages tax credits to develop low-income housing shrank from six active employees to one. First question is, is that, is that still the case? Are we still at one? And this, this reduction has required the agency to request a waiver from the city's Conflicts of Interest Board to allow the program's former director to fill gaps as a paid consultant. How many of staff, how many staff are in the HPD tax credit management office currently? How many vacancies are there? And just jumping on that, how much of this kind of action where HPD is hiring someone as a contractor or as a consultant to fill a gap, how much of that is happening at the agency?
Let me, let me just say very quickly, and then I'll pass it to Kim and to Gardie. But on, on the question of contractors that are former employees that could continue to, that could, in some cases were retiring, but had the institutional knowledge and memory and talent and could keep that work going consistently, I signed off on a number of those with the commitment toward ensuring that we kept our momentum going in those units while we looked to backfill these positions. And then maybe talk a little bit about addressing the numbers.
Yeah, absolutely. We have filled a number of those vacancies. I don't, I don't know if Gardie, if you have the number and the team here today, but we can certainly check.
Housing incentives.
That's specific, yeah, yeah.
So yeah, I know right now for housing, for housing incentives, we have thirty-eight full-time folks on board right now. Inclusionary housing, we have six. So, you know, we're still ramping up, we're still building, we're still building our staff. And the goal is that we can be very aggressive about hiring and fill in those positions so that we can start ramping up our work and start ramping up our production.
Thank you. So you said six?
Yeah, for inclusionary housing, that's what.
Well, but I think she's talking about low-income housing tax credit, which is part of that team. I think, let's check.
We can get back to the breakdown specifically later.
Yeah, they've, we've hired a lot there. Inclusionary housing was another team that we were down to one person. That is almost fully staffed at this point in time.
Yeah, and I would back up, so.
Okay, thank you. So this is segue. Can you please help us understand how HPD shares work between its in-house staff and contractors? For instance, is there any effort to outsource project management functions from HPD's depleted internal capacity to outside vendors?
I think, I'll just give the general project manager, and if you can talk a little bit about the financial point. So in a number of different areas, we are trying a complementary approach. So as we continue to ramp up, and as the, as we've indicated earlier, we're actually seeing additional heads, we're growing the agency. In the meantime, given the housing need, we are looking to retain and maintain institutional knowledge. The other part of it that makes it a very key piece of the growth plan is that since we have new staff, staff who may not be as experienced in public sector housing development, they serve as mentors and trainers so that we can bring our new staff up to par and be able to complete the projects effectively and on time.
Yeah, and as far as relationship, we do have payroll staffing contract that we use to bring temporary staff on. And the goal is that as we fill with permanent staff, we take those temps off the temp contract. So the more staff we bring on, the less temps we have. But we understand the need for delivering services, and we want to ensure we continue to deliver services. So that's why we have that contract to at least have staff just temporarily fill those roles to ensure that we deliver our services. So that's why we have that contract to at least have staff just temporarily fill those roles to ensure that we deliver our services.
And let me just add to that. We, we've also retained contractors in, in the legal work. And in particular, we took that opportunity to ensure that it was MWBE-only law firms that hadn't had the opportunity in the past, you know, historically, to participate in this multi-billion dollar affordable housing industry. And we're doing that in, in every area of the agency, especially in development. Engaging minority and women-owned business enterprises. In development, in procurement, we're one of the highest scoring agencies in terms of using MWBEs. And I know you're probably going to get to that, so I could have shortened the hearing by just bringing that up early.
Only ever so slightly. Thank you. Thank you. So two quick ones, and, and I'll turn it back over to Councilmember Barron. What is the cost implication of these temporary hires and contracted, contracted capacity while we, while we look for the, for the permanent positions? Are we paying more for these temporary individuals or firms, or is it the same?
It's about the same in terms of the, the staff. And also we have some staff that will be on for a part-time basis. So even if having our staff at that salary is going to be costly, we should limit that by having them work part-time as opposed to full-time. So we have different ways we try to keep costs down. But yeah, we done, we try our best not to overpay.
Thank you so much. Actually, with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Barron, then I'll come back.
Thank you very much. I know you're still very vigorous and excited to be here and everybody's wide awake. I'm still so happy to see everybody.
Yes, yes, you captured it. Yes, sir.
Yes, I know. And by the way, I have a special skill. I know when you're looking at me, but your mind is somewhere else. And a few of your staff people actually, they did that. They pretended that they were paying attention, but they, they, they laughed.
So you're a mind reader.
Yes, I'm deep, I'm deep like that. On the WMBEs, the, uh, HPD has a history of giving the general contractor, the major contractor, to white men. White developers. And then when it comes to WMBEs, we're subcontractors and less. So I want to know what's the record on that. How many black developers, brown developers, are actually the major developer or the general contractor, not no sub thing and say, we did thirty percent, you know, for the WMBE? Has that improved? Because it was horrible.
Yeah, let, let me, let me just do sort of a high level. And then Ahmed, who is our agency's chief diversity officer, could talk about the amazing work that we've, we've been doing to change that, right? To address the inequities, to open up opportunity. You know, one of the big challenges for the so-called emerging developers, right, has been access to capital. And, and having a strong enough balance sheet in some cases to go, to be bankable, to become sort of a prime developer and run their own deals and not have to share, right? So we're, we're doing a lot of work in that space, but I, I want to point to the mayor's commitment. Because just last week, you know, we announced the, the new citywide MWBE. I, I don't know what the title is, but it's the person in charge of making sure that we hit new hire targets. So we're, we're doing a reach now where by twenty twenty-seven, we want to have thirty billion dollars of business going to minority and women-owned business enterprises. And by twenty thirty, we want to double that to sixty billion dollars of the city's business. We're one of the largest purchasers of goods and services on the planet.
The, I used to do this with Governor Cuomo, and they all set the goals and everything that they never reach, but.
We've reached, by the way, and then Ahmed can talk about that.
And, and, and to be real honest with you, I'm not talking about diversity. I'm talking about black and brown, because diversity can mean a whole lot of stuff now, and so I meant that. But.
Yep, I understand.
Be it as it may, I think we just need to be more aware of that. And there are, there are black developers who have the capacity. That's the other racist thing they do with us. Do you have capacity? I had an instance with HPD where, you know, you know the Ebenezer Project? Well, that Ebenezer Project, the, a, a black developer, a black woman developer, you, you know, right? She talked to the owners of the property, a black church. And when she came to HPD, they said, you don't have capacity. You have never built three hundred units. And they told her she had to get somebody, quote, a white man. So she gets a white developer. He comes in. And I said, sir, I knew he did, do you have the capacity to do three hundred? He said, yes. And I said, when did you first do three hundred units? He proudly said nineteen seventy-two. I said, that was your first time? That means you didn't have capacity at that time, but you got an opportunity to do three hundred units without having capacity. And access to capital, you know, sometimes, you know, it's HPD's capital, money, and sometimes it's subsidies and sometimes it's the lending institutions that are available to blacks, but we just can't get the major contracts. I'll move past that. NYCHA, a lot of NYCHA residents are not pleased with Rad and Pat. And then for the mayor and y'all, just to give capital money to Rad and Pat developments, it's almost like saying, if you don't get in this, you're not getting capital improvement. And so the rest of the NYCHA that's not in it, not being privatized. And by the way, Rad and Pat, Pat is doing terrible in my development. A lot of tenants are saying they wish they would have stayed with NYCHA. So I'm really putting something together around tenant management of their own developments and looking at funding money into Section Nine, maintaining Section Nine, the federal money. By the way, Barack Obama and Biden cut HUD, as you know, and came in with the idea of privatizing with Rad and Pat. So I think we got to reverse that and get into tenant management and teach them the technical stuff. Get them the lawyers and all of that and show them access to capital. And let the tenants manage it and, and whatever's left, keep it in Section Nine. It protects them more than Section Eight and it's going to these private companies that are doing a horrible job.
Well, there's a lot to get there. I know that we're under clock. Let me, let me try to quickly get through some facts which I think is important to know from.
Your mic.
Thank you. Sorry. There's some important facts to know. First and foremost, HPD is completely committed, committed to a strong MWBE investment. And I understand that there are some specific data points that you'll ask for, and we'll come back to you on that. But as a performer citywide, among large city agencies, we, we spend, we at the top of our procurement spend rate among large agencies that spend over ten million. We commit over the last twenty, oh, sorry, since two thousand eighteen, we have spent eighty-six million for our Local One obligations. We made a commitment to ourselves between our own procurement spending, our, our requirements that we've made of developers. Since twenty seventeen, we wanted to make a commitment to meet one point three billion, and we've actually exceeded that and hit one point four billion. So we see that our work, both using our dollars and pushing developers to invest in MWBE firms, is working. Out of thirteen thousand individual awards last year, ten thousand of those went to MWBE commitments.
But is it for the major general contractors?
Oh, I'm happy to break down those numbers for you, but.
I would like to see the general contractors, because they give us a lot of subs, subcontractors.
These are, these are individual awards and it's a variety of general and subs, but we are making requirements on both fronts.
So that I don't have to kill all the time. I'll accept that. No, I don't accept it, but I hear you. That's what we say. I hear you. Anyway. What about the parking? I think it's a mistake to try to build, to not do parking and do housing. I think I saw it somewhere in the report. Parking is a major issue. These developers need to go down underground with the parking. They don't want to spend that kind of money. But parking is a major problem and they need to do the parking, you know, lots, deep. They need to go down and do the parking lots, because if you wipe that out and put more housing, it's going to be a mess. Finally, affordable in perpetuity. You know, sometimes affordability lasts the duration of the loan, thirty, sixty, even ninety. But how many of the projects have been fighting for affordability and perpetuity forever? You know, how many projects are in perpetuity? How are you doing with that?
I think, and sir, if you could.
Please.
I think what we have tried to do is design regulatory agreements and financial tools, working with developers, but also making clear to them that what we're designing is building incentives to keep these buildings into perpetuity. We also try to shape our term sheets so that they see the value in continuing affordability for the long term. And very often, we've seen many of our projects continue that over and over. That is partly of why we have the backlog. There are projects that come back to us. And we have the capital, we have the, the, the rental assistance tools. And right now, what we've been asking for from the state and look for your support to get both state and federal support for are more tools because we see that they're coming back and these incentives that we're building into our agreements are working.
Thank you, GS. And if I, if I can just quickly add that, you know, the affordability plus legislation asks for an extension of that affordability, the, the regulatory agreements that are tied to the life of the mortgage, which can, can go, we can only do thirty years now. We want to go to thirty-five and forty years.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember. Okay, so turning to homelessness and supportive housing. The fiscal twenty twenty-three November plan implemented a rightsizing peg on New York City fifteen fifteen supportive housing of six million in fiscal twenty twenty-three and five million in fiscal twenty twenty-four, with a total of fourteen point seven million across four years. The peg aligned HPD's budget to slower-than-expected project timelines for supportive housing and longer wait times until lease-up. At fiscal twenty twenty-three budget adoption, twenty-four million was funded for supportive housing rental assistance, which means that the in-year cut is twenty-five percent. The New York City fifteen fifteen agreement targets for development five hundred units of congregate housing at HPD and five hundred units of scattersite housing at the Department of Social Services each year over fifteen years. Therefore, the quarter cut suggests around three hundred seventy-five units at HPD may be expected to be produced in fiscal twenty twenty-three. So the, the question here is, this seems to me to be going in the wrong direction, right? We should be, we should be producing more supportive housing. It's, it's, the, the need is, is dire across the city. And so how many congregate supportive units are expected, is HPD expected to produce in fiscal twenty twenty-three? And can we expect to see this peg again in future years?
Yeah, so as far as the NYC fifteen, talking about the pegs and the budget first, what we saw, as you mentioned before, was with underspending. So usually we plan for the full fiscal year with these projects. The assumption is that these projects will go, will become, will be leased up early in the year.
Let me get a little closer to the.
Okay, sure. So the, the expectation that the projects would be, when we do the budgeting and we do the estimate, is based on a full year. But in reality, it's those projects come online later in the year, and so we may have underspending during the fiscal year. And so the way we save is that the, is the underspending that gets reduced. It doesn't impact the actual projects. So in, in, in terms of the, the, the pegs you mentioned. Now, as far as fifteen fifteen, of the, the fifteen thousand units target, the HPD's share is seven, seven thousand five hundred units, and we're working toward meeting that, that target. And we are on track to meeting that target. I think right now we're above forty-six percent and we're expected to be ahead of that as well.
Okay, two years early, so that we shouldn't be worried about the supportive housing numbers changing.
No.
Okay, the PMMR reports that the median time to lease up in a homeless placement set aside for new construction grew by a hundred six days in fiscal twenty twenty-one to two hundred and three in fiscal twenty twenty-two. There's no data given for the first four months of fiscal twenty twenty-three, so what's the current median time to lease up for a homeless placement?
So, you know, in order to be consistent and accurately measure trends in homeless placements, the MMR metric is calculated using an annual cohort, so it's reproduced by year. But I'll say that we have worked extensively, both on staffing, technology, and looking at our workflow and processes to make improvements. Also, this is something, this is another example of how HPD, DHS, and HRA are working closely together, both on this immediate question, but also writ large about how we are working together on streamlining and putting people to housing faster. An example of that is that this, when you compare fiscal year twenty twenty-three, the time we have elapsed so far with fiscal year twenty-two, we are actually placing twenty-five percent more people per week than we were last time. That is directly a result of the coordination among the agencies at this point. We're also working on a number of different initiatives that, among the agencies, as worth noting, homeless applicants going into non-federally funded units are not required to provide their eligibility because their city FHEP's eligibility is accepted as proxy. Waiving unit inspections on HPD new construction development because we're already monitoring the construction of unit. Units investing in technology to consolidate client, client management, document sharing, streamlining the intake and qualification process. And additionally, in partnership with HDC, we are engaging with a consultant to actually go further and do a thorough review of our entire process. So we started with some initial assumptions, staffing, investments, technology improvements. And we actually look forward to going further and beyond in the coming year to make additional improvements.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So two more sets of question. The first set is just one question. I have heard a lot of concern from advocates, the advocate community, as well as just, you know, landlords, homeowners on the arrears crisis, but particularly the affordable housing arrears crisis. So we know NYCHA is being impacted. Their, their rent rolls are at sixty-five percent collection versus eighty percent collection prior to the pandemic. And these, these kind of, this kind of reality is also settling in for affordable housing owners. So the question here is, what is HPD's role and relationship with a project or a development after the financing stage? How does, how does HPD, what does HPD do to ensure the success of the development?
You wanna, yeah, and Kim, you want to come back up?
So there are several ways we maintain our relationship with buildings that are subsidized by HPD or HDC. We have, both agencies have asset management teams that stay in communication, work to make sure that the terms and conditions of the housing first and foremost are met. But second, we maintain a relationship with both the property manager and the owner to look annually at how the activity and the, and the, and the building's integrity and wellness is over time, making sure that they're aware of ways that we can plug in, help, and maintain that building in perpetuity. So we have talked about our preservation term sheets. We have talked about our rental assistance tools. All of those are put on the table at each of our conversations to make sure that they know that we're there to maintain them long-term. If you want to talk any more specifically.
Also, I would say in addition to that, we were very fortunate. The legislature passed a change at the state level that allows affordable housing projects to collect the full tenant-based voucher rent. And so we are actually starting to amend regulatory agreements to allow that now so that where there is a rental subsidy today, that rental subsidy can help offset or cover some of the operating costs of the building, which puts just less pressure on the building and the residents.
Okay, so in the immediate, with, with the, these affordable housing owners being concerned that they, they didn't receive ERAP money, that they're on the, on a waitlist that's never going to materialize, what tools does HPD have to support these buildings?
I think at this point, you know, we've also read the reports and looking at the data. We continue to have conversations and, you know, we are, we are putting and making available the tools that we do have and hearing more from the community about what else we could be doing. So at this point, we're, we're still evaluating what can be done.
Awesome. Y'all, we're going to make it home to bedtime. Don't, don't worry. Okay, so, so my last round is on homeownership, affordable homeownership. You know, I think the administration, the blueprint, HPD, and members of this council, lots of members of this council from, from very different communities. We've all expressed homeownership as a very important priority that we, that we share. And yet, some of the investments, even, even those that are mentioned in the blueprint are, they seem smaller in scale than, you know, something like the Mitchell Lama of our generation, right? The, the co-op city. Where, where are we building the co-op city of our? The Co-op City, where are we building the Co-op City of our generation? And so, you know, in addition to down payment assistance and home fix and the homeowner help desk, how is HPD thinking about new, new production of homeownership opportunities? Are we to expect a homeownership term sheet in the near future?
Let me, let me just, as I said at the outset, emphasize once again, you know, the level of priority of homeownership for us. And, you know, while you characterized it as modest, it's, it's in excess of fifty million dollars. And just in this year alone, we're going to take some of these programs citywide, double the number of people we help to become first-time homebuyers, and continue to help existing homeowners as, as we have in the past, but redouble our efforts, taking home, the homeowner help desk, you know, one of the, one of the problems that we faced recently, I think the New York Times covered this, about the flight of black families from New York City. We lost a couple hundred thousand, and they're going to places where they can buy a home and build some family wealth. So we're committed to keeping people in their homes, keeping seniors in their homes, sustaining homeownership rates. And then we have some, as you suggested, and I'm gonna call Kim back, because we do have multifamily homeownership tools that, that we have in our, in our toolbox, Open Door and the Affordable Neighborhood Cooperative Program. We, we want to use those tools very aggressively, and we're working with our partners in government to try to resuscitate some of those initiatives.
I think you covered it. I mean, we, we do actually really want to see affordable homeownership developed in New York City. We've, we've committed really significant resources to preservation of affordable homeownership, particularly Mitchell Lama properties, HDFC cooperatives, and we're trying to expand support for both. As the commissioner said, the two main areas where we develop new affordable housing, sorry, affordable homeownership projects is in Open Door, which is our new construction program. We've had some issues figuring out how to structure the financing there so that it actually works, that it is an efficient use of public resources, and that we think we've made pretty significant progress. We're hoping that we'll be able to do more of that in the future.
Thank you, thank you so much. So, I mean, just, and, and, yes, fifty million dollars is great. And just, just looking at the down payment assistance program, am I correct that it'll benefit about seventy households this year?
You.
Just about?
I think.
I see some nods.
Hoping to do a lot more.
Yeah, a lot more than that, yeah.
I think, you know, there's, historically, we were dependent on home funds, and we actually significantly increased the home funds that we're dedicating to provide down payment assistance for low-income New Yorkers. We also, for the first time, hopefully, will be able to introduce a down payment assistance program for moderate-income New Yorkers, so between eighty percent and a hundred and twenty percent AMI. Homeownership is a very hard market in New York City for almost everybody. And so I put a pin in actually launching that because we need state legislation, we need affordability plus in order to fully launch that. But we should be able to, once we are fully up and running, be able to double the support. And we have already increased the level of assistance that we provide to low-income applicants.
The only other thing I'll add is, our homeownership programs obviously range from moderate, moderate middle and down, they actually range down to some of our most vulnerable New Yorkers. In our Family Self-Sufficiency Program, there is a very targeted ability to use some Section Eight vouchers to actually facilitate the ability to move into homeownership. It's a small program, it's something that we're really excited about and hope to grow with new additional funding from the federal government. It provides the ability to move a family forward with a fifteen-year commitment for, when it's connected to a thirty-year mortgage, and it's, excuse me, it's something where if we still have other failsafes to support that family, since it comes around, it comes with the wraparound services, the mentorship, the family development that the Family Self-Sufficiency Program has, and is a cornerstone of our Section Eight work, which is just not providing a voucher, but providing other opportunities to grow for that family. So our homeownership work is very diverse, and we are gonna continue to try every prong and grow every prong.
And the legislative agenda that we have obviously includes homeownership, which goes back to, yeah, our loan authority, our ability to help the people that we're all trying to help.
Yeah, that, that sounds, yeah, affordability plus sounds like the solution to many of our.
A lot of things, yes.
Many of our questions here. Just, just a last, a last question on, on homeownership, which is, what are, what are we looking at? What are, what are folks using down payment assistance for? Are they, are they buying single-family homes, multifamily, co-ops condos? What's, what sort of the breakdown sizes of homes and such?
I don't have a breakdown with me today of the type of homes that people are purchasing, but the assistance is available for small homes, which could have rental units within them, as well as for condo or cooperative units.
Okay, well, my, my final note on this is that I have a three-point-five-billion-dollar proposed development in my district with a lot of willingness, it sounds like, it's a private development site, but a lot of willingness from the, from the development team, at least at this very conceptual phase, to have conversations about what is possible there, and I think there is possibility for a big homeownership demonstration. So, so look forward to talking more about that. That's the Fordham Landing Development. I've asked your sister agency at DCP to work with us on a neighborhood planning study to see what the community would like to do there, but, you know, as those conversations continue, just having HPD's partnership and willingness to bring homeownership there would be, would be wonderful.
Yeah, and we're, we're very interested in that project. As you, as you know, we've been in conversations with the development team, and we're very excited about an opportunity on the waterfront like that in that part of the city.
Excellent, all right. Well, with that, no more colleagues with ten minutes' worth of questions? Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you all so much for answering all of these questions, for being with us today. I really appreciate the, the deep partnership with HPD and the council. We just want y'all to have all the money so you could do all the things, but, but in all seriousness, I look forward to seeing more deeply affordable housing that is answering, you know, a community like mine, as well as homeownership and all the goals that we share, really making progress on those. So thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you, council member.
With that. Nah, let's go. She, she asked if we, if we want a break before public testimony.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say something about pizza.
Also pizza. No, thank you, HPD. So now we'll, we'll turn it over to our, well. Okay, so now I will turn it over to committee counsel to bring us into public testimony.
So we will now turn to testimony from the public. Please listen for your name to be called, whether you are here in person or appearing via Zoom. If you are testifying on Zoom, when it's your turn to testify, you will be prompted to unmute. Please accept this prompt and begin your testimony. In the interest of time, we will be limiting your testimony to two minutes per person.
Good. You okay?
We are, you got it? For our first panel, we will be going with Vishna Vislikka, Brendan Chaney, Dr. Irvina Moody, and Lauren Velez. If you are here in person, please come up to the table.
Time starts now.
Now, press the button, yep, it'll be ready, thanks.
Good evening, Madam Chair and esteemed members of the committee. My name is Vishna Bhuitsa, I'm an attorney at Take Root Justice, we're a community lawyering organization, we work with grassroots, grassroots community groups. I'm testifying tonight on behalf of our Equitable Neighborhoods Practice, which is the department that I work in. My colleague, Jacqueline Devallier, will be testifying about our housing work and our stabilizing NYC work. My testimony here tonight is really going to be focused on three parts around the CLT movement and our CLT community organizing partners. Our first ask on behalf of our, our CLT organizing partners and ourselves is that we really need the council to increase funding for the CLT initiative. The CLT initiative has been funded at the one-point-five million, it hasn't been increased, even though the number of CLTs, the number of neighborhoods that are organizing CLTs is increasing. All of those CLTs are becoming more and more advanced and have much more advanced project needs that come with more costs. And also, as they get more advanced into, into developing their projects, they're developing more complex technical assistance needs, which is where we come in at Take Root, we're a legal service provider. From, from the beginning, some simple needs that our partners had was incorporation, understanding how to do board development. Since then, we've worked on really very complex real estate, transactional real estate projects that if a private firm were hired for it, would cost tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're basically the only people providing these services for free. The CLTs need sophisticated legal services because they're functioning in housing, which is a highly, highly regulated field, where a sophisticated understanding of the law is really necessary. So we're asking you not to make CLTs do more with less money, we're asking you to double the, the one-point-five million currently to three million dollars. If I, if I can just wrap up very quickly. We also need additional capital funding for CLTs to be able to successfully develop these public land sites that they're getting. We had the public land hearing last week, and it's really important, important for the city not to dump neglected sites without taking any responsibility for the decades of neglect during the time that it was stewarding these sites. And the third item is that we really need the budget to reflect that the tax lien sale is over. So it needs to be removed from the revenue line in the budget, and the replacements need to be put in into the budget. The East New York CLT and the Abolish the Tax Lien Sale Coalition have a complicated, have a detailed proposal, it's on their website, it's in my materials. Happy to answer any questions, and there's more information in my papers.
Thank you so much, and I, I'm gonna, excuse me, I'm gonna ask for your partnership in advocating to baseline some of the CLT funds, right? Because otherwise, we're gonna be at the table every single year, even past when I'm a council member, asking for, for CLT funding, right? But if the administration can baseline it and have it become part of HPD's programming, then, you know, we will be in a better position, so.
Yeah, we would be happy to do that in all of the CLTs as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, my name is Brendan Chaney, I'm the Director of Policy and Operations at the New York Housing Conference. Thank you, Chair Sanchez, and the Housing Committee for giving me the opportunity to testify. So you have my full written testimony, in the interest of time, I'm gonna briefly highlight the four issues that we're concerned about. First, we remain concerned about the understaffing at HPD and other housing-related agencies. I'll skip the data, I think the agency talked a lot about the data at the hearing just now. It sounds like they're making progress, I think on our data, we saw a one percent increase in net headcount from October to January, so like, good signs. I think we want to see continued progress and acceleration of progress, actually, and so we're gonna continue monitoring it. We really appreciate your work, highlighting it and pressuring them. You know, we are pleased to see the two new proposals to address staffing from the mayor, the, the increase for hard-to-hire positions and faster OMB response, probably more is needed. We issued a report back in May that had some really detailed recommendations about how to deal with the staffing crisis, and so I think, you know, looking at some of those recommendations also to help really increase staffing. And to be clear, and you guys know this, but just want to put this in the record, understaffing is really affecting services. I'll skip that data. We're also concerned about capital funding, the agency talked about rising costs. It sounds like they think they've got the money to address their unit count this year, but it sounds like there needs to be, they really need to look at it for this year and next year, and the future years. Thank you for bringing up the rental arrears crisis. Just to put on the record, we looked at fifty thousand units, thirty of affordable housing, thirty-one percent of tenants owe arrears, on average, ninety-five hundred dollars owed in arrears per tenant. It's a, it's a crisis that could lead to massive evictions and is affecting the financial stability of our affordable housing. And then just real quick, lastly, we're concerned about code enforcement, we're concerned about the prospect of deteriorating housing conditions and the need for greater code enforcement as signs of financially distressed and over-leveraged housing are emerging. So we just recommend that HPD monitor the housing stock and protect existing housing through code enforcement. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you so much, Brendan, and thank you for your partnership in, in making sure to raise, that we raise all these important issues. On your last point about code enforcement and over-leveraged housing, are you, are you seeing this concentrated in any particular neighborhoods throughout the city?
We haven't seen any great data yet. I think, you know, we look at, was it the Sugar Hill portfolio that was in the news, I think? And it feels like that, it feels like sort of a warning sign. You know, when I was at the council back in two thousand nine, we were working on this. After the financial crisis, there was a big stock of over-leveraged housing, and it, it felt like the same thing, where buildings were over-leveraged, were financed based on the assumption that you could turn over rent-regulated housing and raise the rents, and especially with the twenty nineteen, rent laws, that's not possible, and so I think we're really worried that there's gonna be more housing like this that's over-leveraged. And it, it, what that leads to is disinvestment of the housing and risk for the tenants. So I think, I think, I think the, the point is, we don't have, haven't seen great data, and I think the idea is that we're hoping that HPD will do what they did back then, which is look at the data, pay attention to code enforcement data, look at financial data, and work with tenant advocates to sort of look out for which buildings are in this condition.
Awesome, thank you, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you both.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here for all of these hours.
Just give us one second, we're waiting for Lauren Velez to be unmuted. When the prompt comes up, be sure to, oh, there you go, go ahead.
There we go, thank you so much. Good evening all, and thanks for the opportunity to provide testimony before you all today. My name is Lauren Velez, and I'm the Associate Director for New York at CSH, or the Corporation for Supportive Housing. We're a national nonprofit that works with communities all over the country to devise and implement supportive housing solutions as a response to homelessness. We know that supportive housing is an effective, long-term intervention that pairs permanently affordable units with voluntary individualized wraparound services to offer our most vulnerable and behaviorally complex community members an opportunity to stabilize and thrive in safe, affordable housing. Supportive housing has been proven to increase public safety and create more inclusive, resource-rich communities, and it is far more cost-effective than crisis systems such as jail, shelter, and improper emergency department use. We all know that New York is experiencing an unprecedented housing and mental health crisis, and it's clear that we need more investment in solutions that we know work. And one of these solutions is supportive housing, which directly helps at-risk New Yorkers gain access to the right services and supports. All New Yorkers deserve a safe home to be, and to be connected to resources in their community, not just the most of, those who have the most at their disposal, and if we're truly committed to increasing public safety and creating a healthier New York, we've got to invest in housing options for all. Populations most heavily impacted by this housing crisis are exactly those people that need our support the most, those with severe mental health challenges and other chronic conditions, those with histories of generational trauma and marginalizations, those who've been targets of historic and systemic racism, and those impacted by the criminal legal system. Supportive housing is an evidence. Supportive housing is an evidence-based intervention that has proved to be effective with all of these populations. Although New York has dedicated funding streams to pay for supportive housing, it's not enough. And more and more, we're hearing from tenants, advocates, and others that the funding that we've allotted for these programs isn't making the cut. Rental subsidies are too low to be competitive in the rental market and ensuring that we can place people in quality units. And the service dollars are too low to provide adequate services and pay staff acceptable wages. The impact of the funding gap goes well beyond this. As you know, and we've talked about today, though, impacting city agencies like HPD that are severely understaffed and creating even more of a ripple effect that bottlenecks our systems. While new units are needed, this is not an issue that we can just build our way out of. And in addition to the need for more affordable and supportive housing units, we've got to protect and preserve the ones that we have. We have to ensure that these units are safe, quality units, and that we're not letting those most at-risk New Yorkers live in squalor. Increased vulnerability and needs should not equal a decrease in quality of life and subpar living conditions. I think I'm at time, so I will not go into the individual asks. They will be in my submitted testimony, but we're asking for significant investment in housing subsidies and supports to the tune of 103 million. We want to see investment in New York 1515, supporting the Mokje Hotels. We want to see reallocated funding to increase congregant units and preserve units through 1515. Support for the Fair Chance for Housing bill, support for the closure of Rikers. And the case for, you know, investing in housing can be made both ethically and financially. And the conclusion is the same, safe, affordable housing with services and connections to the community resources is how we increase public safety, get people connected to the support they need to achieve stabilization and help folks move beyond what is often generational cycles of poverty and crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Lauren.
For the next panel who are all on Zoom, we'll have John Rusk, Van Gabrielle, Sandoval, Rakina, Barad Elman, then Farhana Hussain.
Time starts now.
Shall I speak?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Committee Chair Sanchez. You've done an amazing job today. Thank you for this opportunity to testify on a topic we believe is crucial for the safety of the tenants of New York City's buildings, as well as increasing their value. New York City has a rare opportunity this year to support a technological leap forward for its existing building stock. This year, the New York City Council is expected to see the New York City Department of Buildings implement new rules for natural gas detection. Detectors are expected to be installed in all New York City dwellings where natural gas appliances exist, and these rules will require a substantial investment of time and resources by NYC Public Housing. These new requirements are part of Local Law 157, which was passed in 2016 after the devastating losses of eight lives in the 2014 East Harlem explosion, or the East Harlem explosion, and two lives in the 2015 East Village explosion. A special note to the City Council is that if the DOB decides that these gas detectors are monitored, which will certainly save residents and firefighters' lives, the cost-efficient wireless network created within buildings to sense gas leaks can monitor, record, and enable the ability to address several of the issues that the city's buildings currently face, particularly in public housing and low-income housing. With a low-cost network installed for the gas monitors, other small wireless sensors can be deployed, alerting building staff within seconds of water leaks, temperature, humidity, and exhaust fan malfunctions, and other operational and environmental concerns. These near-instant notifications will allow residents and service teams to stop water leaks, prevent freezing pipes, or determine if exhaust fans are operating properly. These specific malfunctions create mold, a leading cause of asthma. Other sensors will alert as soon as the boiler goes cold, if an elevator stops moving, and when a rodent is trapped, allowing swift cleaning and rebaiting so that infestations can be quickly addressed. In my testimony two days ago for public housing with Chair Aviles, she and I discussed how our hard data can force the federal government to acknowledge the issues in public housing and force financial support. Happy to answer any questions. Two minutes.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Thank you so much. I look forward to learning more about the product. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez, members of the committee on Housing and Buildings and council staff. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of New Destiny Housing for the fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget. My name is Gabriela Sandoval-Rigena. I am the Director of Policy and Communications at New Destiny. Our mission is to end the cycle of abuse and homelessness for domestic violence survivors. We do this by developing supportive housing for homeless survivors, assisting survivors obtain subsidies and fine apartments, and by advocating for increased housing resources for them. New Destiny is also a co-convenor of the Family Homelessness Coalition. For more than six years now, domestic violence has been the number-one cause of family homelessness in New York City. Evictions is second to that. Yet survivors are excluded from two lifesaving housing resources, HPD's homeless set-a-sites and City Fund of Supportive Housing. Last year, with the release of the Housing Our Neighbors Blueprint, the Adams Administration committed to expand access to HPD homeless set-a-sites to all unhoused New Yorkers in shelter. Currently, these homelessness- designated units financed by the city are only available to New Yorkers in DHS Shelter with rare exceptions. We wholeheartedly support this initiative and look forward to the city making HPD homeless set-a-sites available to survivors in HREDV Shelter, Youth and DYCD Shelter, and families in HPD's own shelter system. Similarly, we support sister agencies and including domestic violence survivors as an eligible population for City Fund of Supportive Housing created through NYC 1515. These are two budget-neutral administrative modifications that do not cost the city anything. New Destiny is also excited to support funding for the newly established Housing Stability Program for survivors of domestic violence, thanks to Intro 153A, sponsored by Councilmember Kabine. We urge the city to fund the program at $6 million. We're also concerned about staffing shortages at HPD. Limited capacity has delayed affordable housing projects significantly. Less staff means less affordable housing in the city. We urge the administration to address this issue. On behalf of New Destiny, I would like to thank the council for the opportunity to testify. We will submit extended written testimony and look forward to continue working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Gabriela, and thank you for, for your partnership in preparing for this hearing. Appreciate you.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thank you all for sticking around so long. My name is Rabbi Bara Elman, and I'm submitting testimony today on behalf of Tirdorf, New York Jewish Clergy for Justice. We're a new group, a project of Jews for racial and economic justice, and truah, the rabbinic call for human rights. And our inaugural campaign is centered on housing, housing for the unhoused and housing for the housing insecure. While this is clearly a top priority for our city, which is experiencing a housing crisis, it's also a central concern for me as a Jew. The dignity of every human being, people made in the image of God, is a central principle in my tradition, and the crisis of homelessness is an assault on human dignity. Without housing, and there are close to 55,000 homeless adults in New York City, it's difficult to keep clean. And when you can't keep clean, it's hard to hold or even get a job. For children, and there are over 20,000 homeless children in our city, it's difficult to get to school and succeed in school. A baiit, or a home, is foundational to a person's ability to survive, thrive, and live with dignity and health and humanity in this world. But on any given night, tens of thousands of New Yorkers are sleeping in shelters and on the streets. In synagogues this week, New York Jews are going to be reading in the Torah about the construction of the tabernacle, the place where we had, where ancient Israelites centered their worship of God. And in the prophetic reading that accompanies the Torah reading, we'll read about Solomon's construction of the temple. There are two different words that are used for these structures. The tabernacle is called a mikdash, which literally means "a place of holiness." God requests this so that God can dwell among the Israelites, and this means creating a space, a community, for God to dwell in. The temple, on the other hand, is called a baiit, literally a house. The juxtaposition of these two terms teaches us that communities are made of houses, and houses need communities. Housing needs communities that welcome the less affluent and value-supportive systems that many of our unhoused neighbors need. Our city budget is our community budget and has the capacity to address the housing crisis in our city if allocated properly. There are solutions before us.
Your time has expired.
Can I just have a second more? The city owns land across the five boroughs, which can be developed for affordable housing, supportive housing, and subsidized housing purposes. There are empty rent-stabilized apartments and apartments in NYCHA housing that could be made available to unhoused families. One of the obstacles carrying out these solutions is understaffing in the Departments of Housing Preservation, of homelessness, and of health and mental hygiene. I urge the City Council to dedicate more funds for staffing in these areas. We must increase our stock of supportive housing and decrease the barriers to it. And we need to ensure that the stock of affordable housing is distributed across all of the five boroughs. I live in Park Slope. It should be in my borough as white neighborhood as well. I urge the City Council to make housing a top priority in the year's budget. Foundations are essential to structurally strong buildings. Housing is the foundation essential to dignified life in our city. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Rabbi. That was, that was a very helpful reminder of bringing us back to the why we're here and what we're trying to accomplish collectively. Thank you so much. I really appreciate your testimony.
Good evening to the Committee Chair on Housing and Buildings, council members, staff, and all who are present today. My name is Farhana Hussain, and I'm speaking on behalf of India Home, a Queens-based senior-serving nonprofit dedicated to serving South Asian and Indo-Caribbean older adults. And one of the housing problems that has long existed in this community is overcrowding, which is adversely affecting the mental and physical health of our seniors, while also limiting their independence in and outside of their homes. Additionally, many of our seniors rent small studio apartments or live in shared living spaces with their adult children and grandchildren, where they're prone to experiencing emotional and financial abuse. Yet, because they have few affordable and competent housing options available, they're forced to continue experiencing this ill treatment. Specifically, at India Home, we have about 60% to 65% of Bangladeshi seniors we serve who are on low-to-fix incomes and can't afford higher-quality housing. NYCHA is an option seniors are commonly directed to apply for in order to address their housing needs. However, we've noticed that the service has some shortcomings that make it underutilized by our seniors. Most NYCHA housing options offered to seniors we serve are in an entirely different borough or very far away from South Asian communities in Queens, in which our seniors feel closely connected to and have a great sense of belonging. They do not want to relocate to those far-off areas, especially because the homes are not only far, but also lack cultural sensitivity since there are no South Asian grocery stores, health services, cultural centers, and other such neighborhood amenities that aren't there. With housing issues having exacerbated over the last two years due to the pandemic, India Home is embarking on several housing projects to bring higher-quality, affordable, and culturally-sensitive housing catered to the South Asian community. We're establishing a 50-unit supportive senior workforce residence with related communal residence spaces and a 2,000-square-foot community facility, which will be used as a senior center for local residents at 117-11 slash 13 slash 15, 89th Avenue in Jamaica, Queens, in District 27. The residents will house 30 studios and 21-bedroom units with amenities for enriched programming. And, and so, since I'm low on time, I asked that the Committee on Housing and Building support our $2 million innovative senior housing project that I just mentioned. Further details can be found in our written testimony. As well as, I urge you to please propel city housing departments and agencies to integrate more culturally-competent housing options, offer more subsidized rent support, and reduce the long wait times that currently make up our NYCHA housing vouchers programs. Thank you so much for your time and cooperation.
Thank you.
Next, we will have Jackie Delval, Victor Herrera, Deonira Del Rio, and Joelle Balamshwan.
You may begin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jackie de Valle. I'm Coordinator of Stabilizing NYC at Take Root Justice. Stabilizing NYC is a coalition of grassroots organizations that combines tenant organizing with legal representation to combat tenant harassment and preserve affordable housing. Our tenant associations from coalitions across landlord portfolios and have won rent strikes, ERAP protections, ERAP protections prevented evictions, and corrected hazardous conditions. The coalition also targets bad lenders, bad, bad land, lenders, sorry, as predatory equity would not exist without the highly speculative loans. Signature Bank, who's been in the news this week for unscrupulous banking practices, has been one of the more egregious multifamily lenders, having provided loans to SMYC target Steve Kromen, Rafael Tolardano, and Ved Park Ash. Despite these efforts, safe, affordable housing continues to be under threat. Courts have been overwhelmed with eviction cases since the moratorium was lifted and tenants struggled to pay rent, all while landlords continue to use a variety of harassing tactics to displace tenants to flip buildings out of regulatory status in order to maximize profits over people. But I don't think I need to spend a lot of time explaining our housing crisis and the toll it's taking on our communities to this committee. Councilmember Sanchez came to this role with a deep understanding of organizing and housing issues, and her leadership is impressive, and all while being a new mom. So we're requesting $4 million to allow a modest COLA increase to each of the 20 coalition members, helping to ensure that we continue to do the same amount of work as business and living costs have risen sharply. Moreover, in general, I oppose the deep cuts and reductions proposed by Mayor Adams in the preliminary budget to HPD and DOB, and support the CARE NOT cuts in a people's budget. Both of these departments are facing potential cuts and vacancy reductions, as you know, in the upcoming budget, and any reduction services could lead to increase in displacement, homelessness, and unsafe living conditions. Further, we not be, our work wouldn't be possible for the Community Housing Preservation Strategy and the Community Land Trust, which my coworker Vishna spoke so well about when we asked for your continued support. And I believe Vishna has delivered to you my testimony, my written testimony, which goes a lot longer, and I'm in two minutes. So thank you so much. It's great to see you.
Likewise. Thank you so much, Jackie.
Time starts now.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Victor Herrera. I'm a leader and member of Freedom Agenda and longtime advocate for the closure of Rikers Island. In this budget hearing, I see that there is not much strength in acknowledging the severity of trauma that is a result of funding criminal justice measures versus treatment and housing. As a directly impacted constituent and community member, I am committed to voice and support for funding the underserved community that is a result of many of the tortured and tormented citizens of our communities that are confronted with an unfair and highly racist criminal justice system that preys on the differing factors impacting people of color and demographically-stereotype members. If the city of New York is benefiting from change, it needs to invest in our communities that have suffered decades of trauma that is clearly a part of a systemic ideology, starting with traumatic institutional practice. From childhood, UCS, the racial profile of our youth and young, and the criminalization of the mental health, trauma that could only be blamed on the specific funding of agencies that exacerbate homelessness, mental illness, and recidivism. We continue to fund profit-over-people concepts. The problem does not fade, but becomes worse as it progresses. The Department of Corrections is a well-known institution of tragedy and travesty that takes out constituents into a tomb-like environment, as tormenting as it is, and returns constituent, a broken, dismayed individual unsure of a future in our society and accountable experiences forced to endure in pre-trial detention that can be diverted and prevented. Fund the resources that focus on treatment, not jails, housing, and employment. Returning citizens have no resources that are left in their worst crisis with more in the future. With no structure, sorry, with no structure setting such as housing, the risk of economic hardship becoming tragic, costing the city more in the future. The mayor's budget proposes cutting 10% from HPD while DOC is set to get 35 million more. HPD is already moving far too slowly to build affordable housing and move people into it, a process I experienced while waiting more than four years to move into my current apartment. Cutting HPD's budget with further delay will further delay the processing of affordable housing applications and new development, whereas further investment in really affordable housing and accessible housing can reduce the DOC jail population and meet the closure of Rikers by 2027. Closing, nothing changes unless there's change. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You have a lot of work to do to center formerly incarcerated persons. Appreciate your work.
Hi, good evening, Chair Sanchez and members of the committee. Thanks so much for sticking around and for the opportunity to testify. My name's Deonira Del Rio. I'm a co-director at New Economy Project. We're a citywide organization that works with community groups to build a just economy rooted in cooperation, equity, racial justice, and ecological sustainability. We worked with the City Council and coalition partners all over New York a few years ago to launch a groundbreaking discretionary funding initiative that you've heard about, the Citywide Community Land Trust Initiative. And that, that support from the City Council has helped catalyze the growth of CLTs across the five boroughs that are now providing or on their way to providing deeply and permanently affordable tenant and community-controlled housing and other neighborhood-led development. CLTs are a social housing model that New York City desperately needs to address root causes of our city's affordability crisis, to combat displacement, and to build power and collective community wealth in Black and Brown neighborhoods. As you know, CLTs give communities shared ownership of land. This is what they uniquely contribute to the affordable housing movement. They take that land out of the speculative market for They take that land out of the speculative market for good, and they set the terms of development on top of that land to ensure permanent affordability and neighborhood-led development without displacement. This is so vital. CLTs can work with multiple affordable housing models, and it is a tool that makes sense for the city from a public policy and equity point of view. CLTs preserve city investment in affordable housing through that permanent affordability, and again, are just urgently needed to promote racial equity in housing and land use decisions. I'd wanted to just underscore, you heard about the need to expand funding for this initiative. This year, we're asking for $3 million for 20 organizations that are working around the city on community education, organizing, neighborhood planning, groups that are providing comprehensive legal and technical support, forming partnerships with developers and their communities, and forming community-driven plans for housing and neighborhood development. As the city and state are advancing policies that will help CLTs steward more land and housing, we need a commitment from the city to continue to robustly support this infrastructure. This isn't just about community by community providing services or outreach. This is really vital infrastructure that New York needs, again, to keep New Yorkers safely housed and meet the scale of demand that we have all over the city. So thank you so much for this hearing and the chance again to testify.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dayanira, and really appreciate your advocacy on this.
Hi, my name is Joelle Balamshwan. I'm with the Supportive Housing Network of New York. The network is a statewide membership organization representing some 200 nonprofit developers and operators of supportive housing, affordable housing with embedded support services for people with history of homelessness and additional challenges. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today. The mayor recently referred to 8,000 units of supportive housing. These units are part of the pre-existing New York City 1515 units. The network's analysis suggests this commitment is not on track to be completed in the proposed timeframe. 6,200 units are in imminent danger of not being realized. As you know, half the planned units were to be new development congregate, but already at year seven, 70% of those units have been awarded. Meanwhile, only 17% of the planned scattered site units have been awarded. These are apartments rented in the private market with mobile case management. This is due to underfunding of scattered site rates in combination with very tight housing market and rising rents. To accelerate or even reach its original goal, the city needs to immediately reimagine 1515, as well as increase scattered site service rates to 17,500 to match those of congregate. The city should, this year, reapportion the remaining 6,200 unawarded scattered site units into four buckets. First, we propose that the city develop more congregate residents, thereby increasing the city's stock of supportive and affordable housing. Next, we propose the city create a flexible preservation fund to bolster the service and operating contracts underpinning thousands of units of older supportive housing. Third, we recommend the city keep a portion of the original scattered site commitment albeit funded at 17,500 per unit rather than the current unusable rate of 10,000. And lastly, we recommend the city work with city-funded affordable housing developers to overlay homeless set-aside units that have little to no funding for services with 1515 scattered site contracts. To ensure equitable access to all units under 1515, the administration should allow stays in jail and prison of more than 90 days to count towards homeless time, so as to allow thousands of people returning from jail or prison access to 1515 supportive housing. Meanwhile, to achieve 1515, the administration needs to expedite the contract approval process at DSS, which currently takes a year. And finally, the administration must adopt a 6.5% cost of living increase across the human services sector to provide... So providers can recruit and retain qualified staff who provide essential services. Sorry for going over. Thank you so much again for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that, and I look forward to your written testimony as well.
Thomas Gogan, Donald Mesbit, Shrevanti Konical, Kira Armstrong, Chanel Bueno, Viviana Gordon, Paula Segal, Juan Calcutta, Alex Stein. Okay, this concludes the public testimony. If we have inadvertently forgotten to call on someone to testify, please raise your hand now using the Zoom raise hand function, and we will try to hear from you. Okay.
All right. Thank you so much to all of the team members and staff members who pulled many overnight, late sessions of working to put this hearing together. Thank you so much to our teams. Thank you to HPD. Thank you to the members of the public. This hearing is adjourned. Congratulations. I would like...